If we go to the next slide. In March of 2020, it went to 75. March of 2020, when fiscal 21 budget came out, the chapter 78 was $80,882,132. Now, in August, when this final budget came out, goes back down to $75,001,709,000. Now, the reason for this, in February of 2020, when the governor's proposed budget came out, we're going to get $80,882,132 in chapter 70 money. It was an increase of 5.8 million, almost 5.9 million over last year. We're now getting funded at last year's rate. In the district contribution, when I mean the district, I mean the city's contribution will now increase by 4.18 million instead of the original 5.9 million. That's a decrease of $1,125,000. However, as you'll see in a few minutes, when you take all factors into consideration, our overall budget for fiscal year 21 is going to increase, and this does not count special education transportation, by $448,145. And if you're, many of the school committee members that have been here for a number of years understand, especially in the last four or five years, the mayor and the city council, and especially Mr. Eric Demus, the chief financial officer, are very supportive of the schools. And over the last four years, the average that the city and the mayor have given us over net school spending is $4.6 million. That does not include any capital improvement money that the city has given us to make a lot of renovations at the power lines, school, additional career and technical education, or some people know what is vocational space at the high school, the Kavarian School Playground and Taunt Lot, and the complete air conditioning of the Webster School a few years ago. We are one of few school districts that are 100% air conditioned. If you go back to February, a lot of people may not understand this, but I'll explain it. When the governor's budget came out, and you take the property tax values in Everett into consideration, and a lot of this was driven by, obviously, the Encore Casino that was built, the city's municipal revenue growth factor increased by 23%. The next highest in the state was only 8.65%. Obviously, all this is kind of like a moot point because of the COVID-19 outbreak and everything has changed. This is one document that hasn't changed, the cherry sheet. The cherry sheet has remained consistent. The state has not updated the cherry sheet. At some point, I do expect them to update the cherry sheet. And the cherry sheet, what the cherry sheet does, so everybody at home knows and the school committee knows, it gives you the amount of retired teachers' health insurance. All teachers, once you retire, are required to go into the GIC. And that amount there is $1,90881. And on the next page, it talks about charter, we get some reimbursement money for the students that go to charter school. And the governor's original proposal, it's a little bit over $1.8 million. And as you can see, we also get charged for the tuition for kids going to charter school. And that's significant. I'll get into that a little bit more when I talk about the chargebacks in the next section. The chargebacks in the next section, before I get to the budget book, the chargebacks in the next section. And as you can see, on the next slide, the proposed operating budget for this year will be $83,799,966 plus special education, transportation, the total operating budget of $88,299,966. Obviously, the net minimum contribution is the city's cost at $35,434,838, plus the chapter 78 at $75,001,709,000 for a total required net school spending of $110,436,547. City chargebacks, and those will be on the next page, amount to $26,636,581 for total operating budget of $83,799,966. Chargebacks, the costs associated with the school department that the city incurs, and this has been in place since ed reform started in 1992, 1993. We pay all the costs of the board of health nurses that work in our schools. We pay for one licensed nurse practitioner, per diem for nurses that, when a nurse calls in sick and we have to get a replacement, and we pay a quarter of the salary of the director of the board of health and the clerk of the board of health. Pay 42.23%, and that's what our school department operating budget was in fiscal year 20 compared to the city's. So that's how you come out with the 42.23% of the auditor's office, the budget office, the treasurer, purchasing and personnel departments. That's because they pay, they spend a significant amount of their day working on school department purchases, our school department issues. We pay for the use of Everett Stadium, $51,000 a year. Pay for the health insurance for all our present employees. I'm sorry, I went a little too fast there, $10,894,558. The health insurance of the retired teachers from the cherry sheet, $1,90861. Individuals that are in city retirement, like our clerical, our custodians, our paraprofessionals, we pay the retirement, $1,569,003. Charter school, Leicester tuition, I mean charter school tuition, Leicester reimbursement, which comes to $8,594,472. Workman's compensation trust funds, $326,015. Life insurance, $33,812. Medicare, $765,296. Unemployment, for those people who collected unemployment last year, $127,257. Insurance on all the school buildings, including the school administration building, $386,047. And we pay for the school resource office, $193,382. The total chargeback of $26,636,000. Now, we'll get into the budget book itself, and we can go page by page here. I don't know, after that presentation, before I go on, if anyone has any questions at this point, or you want me to start and go to the budget book? That's to Mr., to the chairman, I don't know how you want to handle it.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Well, Ms. Murray.
Who are we paying to use the stadium?
We don't actually pay, it comes off the top, Ms. Murray, of our budget. So the city in their budget book allocates a certain percentage to use the stadium, and it's $51,000 in the city budget book for fiscal year 20. Obviously, I haven't seen the 21 book. So we pay for the use of Everett Stadium, that would take care of the heating, the lights, the grounds.
So it's just.
Years, Mrs. Murray, it's been in existence, I've been here, I don't think the chargeback agreement has changed, it started in 1993.
So that's more about the cost of the upkeep of the stadium more so than the rental of the stadium for the teams?
That's correct. It's mostly up. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. All set? Anybody else? So page one of the budget book. This is page one right here of the budget book. As you can see, a lot of decreases in the line items. As you can see, central administration, the personnel services for all the individuals who work here. And the clerks, in the clerks, which are the secretaries, or the, we've changed that name now to administrative assistants, work in the schools, that's decreased by $46,000 from last year. General expenditures has increased by $85,000. In instructional, that's mostly the teachers, some of it is the coaches, some of it is account adjustments to teachers' salaries because they earn credits. As you can see, that's going down by about a million dollars. And that goes from the first column, just so you know, we're going from the original budget last year, from the original budget in the first column. General expenditures are going up by $239,000. And when you get to the pages, you can see why. Special expenditures are going down by $434,000. A lot of that is in the tech, because we have some grant money coming in. Special education personnel services, that's a large increase. And the reason for that, and I'll get to that when I get to special education, is we took 14 people off of a grant and put them in the regular budget to save what's called MTRS, a mass teacher retirement system money. The 9% you pay on their salaries was going to save ourselves in the grant, $110,000. You end up paying the MTRS twice. It's kind of strange, but that's what happens. Special education general expenditures will remain the same at 3.1 million. Tuition, and you could see, that's going to be a drastic decrease in the tuition for out of district. That's what we put on the 240 grant. So that's for the decrease, and we switched that to instructional, I mean, special education personnel services. Gateway to College program were cut by $75,000. Those are students that attend Bunker Hill Community College. Athletic general expenditures increased by $32,000. The reason for that mostly has to do with banquets and certificates and things we want to be able to get to students. Maintenance custodial personnel service only increased by $30,000. That's mostly due to the raises that we gave them. Maintenance and general expenditures, we were able to cut by $500,000. And that's basically, a lot of that had to do with the cut, cutting of the cleaning company at the high school. Obviously, electricity and gas are tough to come by, depending on the winter. Those are level funded at the same amount from last year. And we're going to do all the student handbooks electronically this year. So the bottom line, you know, it looks, when you look at it, looks like the operating budget went down by $1,551,855, but that's from the first column. All right, if you go from the middle column there, where the total operating budget after we cut the $2 million was $83,351,821, our operating budget this year is actually increasing by $448,145. So it actually is going up, it's not a significant increase, but it actually is going up from what we ended up with after the $2 million cut that we gave back to the city. And just to remember, on that $2 million cut, we actually didn't lose any money last year. We were able to get that in a grant that Saldey Domenico was able to get for us in 1.250 million. And then, when the mayor and the city council originally gave us the 6.5 million above net school spending, we agreed to pay the health insurance costs, which was, came to about $800,000. So that's why that money was given back to the city. If anyone has any questions on that particular page, and you want to get, wait till we get to the various sections?
Yeah, I've got some questions, if I can. The, the presentation that you, you had, that laid everything out, is that located in the book? You know, the short presentation that you just did, that you do every year? First page is the.
Mr. Parker, are you talking about the one with the charts and the charts and stuff like that, and the graphics?
Yeah.
Usually, we usually do that, Mr. Parker, on Monday. You will get that over the weekend. That's the one we do prior to the public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
So I will have that ready for you. I just didn't want to do it in case you make any, in case there are any changes to the budget tonight. So I will have the money, that's done prior to the public hearing.
Okay.
Do have last year's, if you have any questions about it, but I didn't do, I didn't do this year's yet. I will do that tomorrow.
All right, so last year, the total budget without special education was $83.3 million. And this proposed budget is $83.8 million, so to speak. Right?
That's correct.
Okay. Because what is our? So our operating budget is $83.8 million. Because I was looking at, maybe you can, I think you gave me the answer before, but I'm looking at last year's presentation, fiscal year 20, we had an operating budget of $78.8 million. Was that a result of that $2 million that we got, or? All right. You, you, okay.
78, I think that was before the $6.5 million. I think that was prior to the $6.5 million.
You're right. Okay, all right, you're right, I read the sheet wrong. I, I, I'm looking at the number of the $6.5 million, thinking it was special transportation. All right, thanks, you answered my question.
No problem. Any more questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may not be the appropriate time, but you mentioned about the virtual books. When we do virtual books, are we purchasing those programs for the books, or are they leased programs?
Right now, I believe we are purchasing, we are purchasing the leased programs because over time, we may still be able to use them virtually. It'll be less costly over time to replace, what's commonly known as a textbook, I guess. Because the students wouldn't have to carry it back and forth every day. And if they lose it, it doesn't have to be replaced.
Okay, so less costly over time. Okay. As long as we have the virtual access. And my other question is, on that same line, not that same line, but if we're going virtual, we also have a line item for textbooks.
Okay, right now, in the line item for textbooks, a lot of that money and is eaten up by what we're calling virtual textbooks at this point.
Okay, so that's.
Situation we're in, we're not buying the commonly, the hard covered copy of a textbook. We're buying virtual textbooks where, as long as you have access to the internet, you're able to access it.
Okay, and I just have one more question on that. And that is, if we still have textbooks in our schools, and they're not outdated, and we weren't replacing them or updating them this year, is it possible that we can distribute a lot of these textbooks to our students so that they do have hard copies at home?
Oh, absolutely. We, I believe, and the superintendent or the deputy superintendent could jump in here if they so choose. I believe we are making a plan for individuals who need Chromebooks and maybe need some other materials at some point in time to pick up these materials. We're still working on the plan, obviously, plans change every day under this current COVID situation. But obviously, if students have the textbook and teachers wanted them to have the textbook at home, we would try to make that happen, obviously, in a safe way.
Okay, no, I agree with that because that's being wasted. And hopefully, we're not going to be out of, you know, the in-person classes forever. And I'm just thinking, how much money are we going to continue to spend on virtual books if we already have books that we can be using? And then they can continue using them. And I'm not speaking against virtual learning. For a long time, I've said that I wish we offered it to those that actually need it on a case-by-case basis all the time. So I'm not against it, it's just, I don't want to spend money, and we only need this for three months. And then it goes by the wayside, if we have the books at hand. I, the city's been great with volunteers. I know we could safely deliver whatever we need to, to our students. Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Mr. Bremsky?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Same page. So originally, fiscal year 20, the budget was 85.3. We got a $2 million grant. So we reduced the operating budget by 80 to 83.3, correct?
We got a grant in the amount of $1,250,000, Mr. Parker, not the 2 million. The other money was, I don't know if you remember, when we were having this meeting last year, Mr. Demus was here in the committee room with him.
Yeah.
Additional staff that we were hiring, we had a line item in the budget, approximately $4.1 million last year for additional staff. But that wasn't including the health insurance chargeback at the time. So we agreed with Mr. Demus, we came up with a percentage on a chart to give the city that money back at some point, and we gave it back in approximately November to cover the health insurance cost of those additional employees.
Okay, so, but we, so we got a grant in the amount of $1.2 million, approximately. That we used, that we used mostly for employees.
To be honest with you, Mr. Parker, we used it for all employees.
Yeah.
Fiscal year, make sure I said it right, fiscal year, fiscal year 20.
Right.
And so well budget-wise, I received an email from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, either in late April or early May, that you were able to carry that money over to fiscal year 21 if you wanted to. So we did not, at this point, we did not use any of the money in fiscal year 20. We are carrying that grant over to fiscal year 21, and we have all employees on that grant. I, approximately 14, Mr. Parker, I might be off a little bit, but approximately 14 employees.
So we were able to carry over from fiscal year 20 to 21 a $1.2 million grant?
That's correct.
Okay. That's encouraging because, you know, basically, we've got a flat budget. But, you know, when you study adding grants, adding them and subtracting them, what that net number might be, might be different than flat, if you follow me. But if we're able to carry over the $1.2 million from year to year, then in a sense, we really are dealing with a year-on-year flat budget.
That's correct. And you got to remember, Mr. Parker, once we got to the first or second week of March, and we basically closed because of the COVID situation.
Yeah.
A lot of our expenses went down, that's why we were doing so well budget-wise, and that's why we were able to carry that grant over to fiscal year 21. So it is encouraging. Absolutely is. Correct.
All right, great, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Samantha, Ms. Lambert, go ahead.
Thank you. Are we going through the line item details under this, or is that next, just to understand?
I think maybe, once you see the pages, Ms. Lambert, in the other sections, it may be easier to ask questions, but I can do it any way you prefer.
Okay, because I just had a few questions on the line item. Going to want to jump ahead if that was next, if you. Over them individually.
whichever way you prefer, Ms. Lambert, it's fine with me.
Okay, because I just, I had a question, it's on the next page, underline that, of details for instructional personnel services.
Okay. And the central administration, you want me to, is everyone done with this page? You want to go to central administration? Is everyone all set, we can go to central administration, is that the one you're talking about, Ms. Lambert?
Yes, but I think Ms. Murray has a question, so I'll yield my time.
Okay, thank you.
But Ms. Murray, go ahead.
So my question is about both COVID testing and now flu vaccines in terms of buckets. I see that there's a bucket for visual and hearing screening, and I'm assuming there's other medical expenses that we absorb for our at need, at-risk population. Are we putting aside money for testing for COVID and/or for flu vaccines within the school buildings? And if not, is this something we can consider? Is this something the state covers? I'm new to this whole budgeting process with that particular aspect, so I'm curious about how that works.
I'll tell you what I know about the budget, and what I know about some of the grant money that's coming in, Ms. Murray, and then the superintendent or deputy could jump in if they want to. But we have a significant amount of grant money that's come down to help cover some of these COVID-related expenses. We have one grant in the amount of $1,562,791 that we're using for some translation services, some iPads for students that don't have them, laptops, headphones, cleaning services, air ventilation, you know, some wall dividers in some of the rooms. Some of these, these are earmarks, so you automatically get them. So now that we know about more about these flu vaccines and other things that you just talked about, we are able to amend these grants. We also have another grant, Ms. Murray, in the school committee in the audience at home, in the amount of $1,573,875 for some of the same stuff, Chromebooks, laptops for teachers, and software for the Chromebooks. And we also already received a tech grant that we had to apply for, that wasn't an earmark, in the amount of $775,000. So there is some money there, Mrs. Murray. And a lot of the money, and Mr. Demus may be able to jump in, because we had a conversation with him today, with the deputy and the superintendent. If we do have some expenses like that, Mrs. Murray, some of that, up to 75% of those expenses, may be reimbursed by MEMA. Actually, FEMA through MEMA, I believe, is the answer. It's FEMA money, you have to incur the expense first, then put in for the reimbursement. So right now, there isn't a specific line item in the budget for that, but I think if we did expend any money for that, Mrs. Murray, we could get it back through FEMA, but I would yield to Mr. Demus to try to answer that question, if he's still on the call.
Yeah, hi Charlie, good evening, everyone. I am, I am currently working with the administration, and we're making sure that any and all potential reimbursements that the city is eligible for through federal and state funding, that we're including the school department as well. We're actually having another follow-up meeting with the administration tomorrow at 10, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're making sure that we're maximizing every single potential dollar for both the city and the school.
Are we, Mr. Demus, are we planning to make both city employees and school employees covered for COVID testing? Are we going to be able to afford them COVID testing in the case of outbreaks, potential clusters, things like that?
We're still working with FEMA in regards to that. We've been able to get reimbursed in the past. And what we're doing is, we're now breaking up our FEMA applications into three different stages, rather than waiting until this situation, you know, finally resolves itself, if it ever will. So we're actually working with FEMA and submitting applications for all costs incurred through June 30 of 2020, where then, we were also given permission to resubmit and open up a new application through December 31, so that any and all funds that we receive that can be reimbursed, we can actually capture them during the fiscal year to help both the city and the schools with any budgetary constraints. And then at that point, I'm hoping that the emergency has been removed before June 30 of next year, but we'll be actually resubmitting for June 30 of the following year as well.
Has there been a conversation with city hall around, like, testing centers for city employees, regardless of whether they work for city hall or if they work for the school department in terms of testing?
You know, I'd have to actually defer to the public health nurse, Sabrina, in regards to that. But I do know that, I don't know where they're getting tested, but when we do have any city employee that is eligible or has been exposed to the level that needs to be testing, they contact the public health office, and they're immediately scheduled for a test. We have not had an issue with any employees not being able to receive tests.
And will you absorb that for the school department as well, or do we need to look at that individually?
You know, I look at the school department as just another department, as if it was DBW or the police department, as I explained to the administration today. So I'm including all school employees, I'm treating the school as another department, as any other throughout the city, so.
That's wonderful, thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Any other questions on this page? All right, we'll now go to central administration, page one. As you can see, central administration, the salaries for the individuals that work in the school administration building in the administrative assistance decreased by $45,000. Administrative overtime and stipends decreased by $5,000. Miscellaneous perfect attendance by $5,000. And administrative part-time temporary help by $3,832. And just so you know, in the school committee members who are here private, I mean, prior to this year's budget, the administrative part-time temporary help, mostly to pay for the people that work, to help on the joint committee, help fill out the free healthcare forms up at city hall. So the total operating budget for central administration, before you get to school committee, is 2,554,209 dollars. Then you have school committee salaries in there for 110,000 for a total request this year of 2,664,209 dollars. Now, is there any specific questions on that page?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lambert.
Yeah, and through you to Mr. Obremsky, can you explain the perfect attendance? Because that seems.
Yeah, what happened is through collective bargaining agreements with various unions in the city and some contractual obligations that we have with various individuals of contract. Any individual in the school department that gets perfect, has perfect attendance, that means they weren't absent all year. They get one day's pay at last year's rate. Like, we will start tallying, we haven't done it yet. We start figuring out shortly in the next couple of weeks, how many people had perfect attendance last school year in the various categories. And sometime in mid to late September or early October, they will get, if they had perfect attendance, they will get a day's pay at last year's rate of pay.
So these are already negotiated parts of contracts?
That's correct.
And so, I mean, if, if we can't do anything about that at this, I think it's something we should consider, that that's not really something we want to incent. And I think from a public health perspective, we learned the hard way, incenting perfect attendance is detrimental. So, you know, I, I appreciate your response, though. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we.
Ms. Murray.
So we actually did, in the collective bargaining agreements that we just recently finished, we did take that out. So there's going to be some grandfathering, of course, moving forward, that, you know, people are entitled to what they've already earned. But that, moving forward, that is not a practice that we are going to, like you said, you know, condone or, or encourage.
Thank you.
So my question was essentially about the fact that we're entering impact, impact bargaining and whether or not we could remove that based on our impact bargaining. But it sounds like you've already taken care of it, Superintendent?
Well, only for the contracts that we just recently. So there are still some, we did not do the teaching contract this past year, but we do have all of them coming up next year again.
Is there a way that we can address this with the teaching population in terms of impact bargaining? So that we can maybe spend that money and other ways for them that would benefit them more than a perfect attendance reward? Maybe a different sort of incentive for taking on additional responsibilities or PD, given what we need for virtual learning and/or professional development?
Yeah, I think that's actually a great idea. And we are in the midst of bargaining with the union right now for next school year, so we can certainly bring that up.
I would certainly rather reward people for taking like some cultural responsive PD or some social justice PD and/or some, you know, additional responsibilities around the COVID stuff. Anything like that would be, I think, money better spent than on a perfect attendance award. And I think, I mean, not to speak for her, but I think Ms. Lambert's with me on that. Yes?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions on the first page? Okay, go to page two. As you can see from looking at page two, the overall central administration line item increased by 85,000. The largest increase is in the dues and expenses category. Went up by 180,000 dollars. Office postage remained flat. Police details, um, down $15,000. Auto mileage, the same. Telephones increased by $5,000. Labor consultant left the same amount of money in there for this fiscal year. Developmental educational workshops, we cut by $60,000 because we have some grant money to be able to pay for that. Copy of lease remain the same at 250,000. Advertising, we significantly cut because we're doing mostly everything online now. Cut that by $25,000 for an overall, the overall line item increase was 85,000. It's in the dues and expenses. And Alex, the dues, just so everybody knows, stuff we pay to the Secondary School Administrators Association, dues we pay to the MIAA, which is the Massachusetts tennis classic athletic association, dues to be able to pay to the GBL, formerly we were in the Northeast Conference, now we're back in the GBL. And the other expense in here, this is where the cost of insurance for the school committee is. And I am working on that for next year right now. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about this page? Everybody all set on page two?
Nope.
Okay, page three. As you can see, these are the salaries for the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, the assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent of business, the clerks, which you can see was cut significantly, the amount of clerks there. Principal clerks remain the same. There's one clerk, obviously, in the superintendent's office. I should have changed the word clerk to administrative assistant. I apologize for that. Head of the parent information center is out right now. We're changing that to a family liaison position. Head of the Gateway College is in there. So overall, this line item, you can see from last year to this year, there is a decrease in the amount of spending in this line item, and the school committee expenditure remain the same. But the number of positions has decreased by eight at this point in time. The total number of positions in central administration has decreased by eight. Mostly, a lot of, some of the administrative assistants in this building, and this is also where the attendance offices previously were. That has to do with most of the eight cuts. There obviously are a couple of increases, but most, but overall, it's a decrease. Any questions?
Mr. Obremsky?
I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, go ahead.
I just, it's for you to all the administrators. Attendance offices, you know, right now, obviously, remote hybrid until the situation does to become manageable. And at some point, hopefully this next school year, when everybody's back to school, when enough, hopefully, we can address the staffing and think about having at least one onboard. And the reason for that is that, you know, it's, the role of the attendance officer is to get kids to go to school. Is one of those areas that we will weaken per the state's standards on our report card. And also that person spends a lot of time in, in court. And I'd rather see an attendance officer, at least one, doing that as opposed to administrator or a school resource officer. So just more of a comment than a question.
Thank you. And I will speak to the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, and Mr. Shaw about that request. But we'll take that into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any other questions on this page?
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Ms. Murray, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Obremsky, to you through the chair. If there are zeros in the lines, does that mean that we are not budgeting for them? Because some of these things, obviously, we are going to need.
Can you give me an example, Ms. Murray, just so I can?
So I'm assuming that there will be head of the parent information center at some point?
Yeah, what I just said, maybe you didn't hear me, Ms. Murray, and I apologize for that. Right now, we, we laid off, or we restructured some of the things in the school department.
Right.
And is now going to be, I believe the exact title is a family, senior family parent liaison, I believe is the exact title.
Right.
For putting that person on a grant, so that's why it's not.
Okay, okay. So that makes a lot more sense. Okay, so that was my first.
Position. We definitely have the position. It's still, and it is the same person that was.
It's just funded differently.
That's correct, Ms. Murray.
Okay. And then my other question is, can you please say more about the $130,000 TV studio cost?
Yeah, previously, the hundred, the, the TV studio, for some reason, were listed in the high school budget. They really shouldn't be because they're not teachers. So it's the two people that videotape. The school, as you're familiar, Ms. Murray, probably from the school committee meetings, it's the two individuals that work there that videotape the school committee meetings.
Okay.
And various events, they don't just work at a high school. They are just acquired. They go school to school to school. They do, actually, they do a lot of night work. They go to basketball games, hockey games, football games, so.
So they're the people who are taping the extracurricular events for the ETV stuff?
Yeah, in the school committee members. That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Obremsky?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
On the, the TV studio, is there any discussion going on about using channel 15 to enhance delivery of remote learning?
I haven't had that conversation with anybody myself, Mr. Parker. I'm not sure if the superintendent has. I don't know if she wants to jump in, but it actually is a pretty good idea, Mr. Parker. So I will make a note of it, and I can speak to Mr. Shaw, the deputy, and Mr. Norman and everybody in the next few days. But it is a very good idea.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this page? Page four is really pretty similar to the previous page. Just list the salaries, anyone that had, individuals longevity, and anybody here that gets, this would be their pay for this coming school year, fiscal year 21. Pretty similar to page three, just a different breakdown. Any questions on this particular page? Okay, Mr. Chairman, with permission, I will go to the next section. That's okay?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't see your picture. That's why I'm not recognizing you.
That's okay. So I'm in the senior clerk typist lines. Mr. Obremsky, and there are several people earning over $100,000 a year. Are those individual salaries or are those like groups of people?
Those are groups of people. The average, the senior clerk typist, all the top step on the salary scale is a five step scale.
Oh, I see it. Okay, number of positions right here. Yep. Okay, I got you. I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem. And now I will go to instructional page one. As you can see, this is instructional personnel services, page one. Total teacher salaries. Now, just so everybody is clear, this is, does not include special education teachers. This is all our regular teachers, and all our specialist teachers, and all our CTE teachers. So the total amount of money that we'll spend this year is for fiscal year 21 that's recommended is 42,863,392, which is a 3.371 million increase from last year. Administrator salaries will decrease. And as I will explain later on, most of that decrease in the administrator salaries is we changed the APs at the high school back to deans. So now they're back into the teachers bargaining unit. So that causes some of the increase in the previous line item. Extracurricular activities, we increased because Mr. Norman had a concern that we had cut a lot of the clubs at the high school. We wanted to be able to bring a lot of the clubs back. Now, obviously, under the situation we're in, we're not sure if that's able to happen. But we did budget for a lot more clubs than, than we previously had. So that caused that increase of 104,000. This is the line item, the substitutes, an additional staff. I combined it into one line item this year rather than have two separate line items. The basic reason for combining it is we're not really sure if we're going to need substitutes. If we're not in school, and I don't know how many substitute teachers we'll really need. That's why a lot of the areas, especially in special education, Mr. Donahue and some of the principals are looking still for additional staff. We're looking at the numbers very carefully. We're actually going to meet with the principals and Mr. Donahue either Friday or Monday to go over that. That's why there's such a large amount of money there, 1.1 million 675,000. The additional teachers, like I said, I combined it to the previous line. And part-time temporary help, just in case we actually do need anybody. We do have some part-time help. I'll go who they were. We had Mr. Towel who made some signs for us. He was especially helpful during the graduation season. Some of yous may be familiar with some of these names, and maybe I shouldn't mention the names individually. But we have a part-time person in the athletic office. We have a part-time teacher down at the Devens. And we have the person, we consider him part-time, the person who does security at the front door at the high school. They're all paid from that line item there. Overtime, most of the overtime is from CTE or culinary for events we have at night at the high school. Those individuals get paid by the hour to cover those events. Then you have miscellaneous, like we were already talking about miscellaneous, perfect attendance. Maybe we do something through negotiations on that line item. Severance pay, people that retire, this is sick time buyback. It's part of a contractual obligation with the various administrative bargaining units. Get so much per day, but if you have any sick days left. Summer school enrichment program that finished, that was the program at the English School, we budgeted $100,000. There is some money in that line end because that summer program is over right now. Devon School, the summer program there basically ate up that $35,000. In the account adjustment, these are for teachers returning credits. They have approximately till October 1st to turn in credit. Some of them may move up on the salary scale. The reason I budgeted 189,000, I mean, 240, I'm sorry, even though we only spent 189, if you look at what we spent the year before, it was 217. So it fluctuates various, various year to year. So that's why I budgeted the 240. We may not use it all. It's tough to tell. In mentoring, we budgeted zero because that's going to come out of a grant this year. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions, but overall, that line item decreased by a little bit over a million dollars.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you. So can we talk more about the summer school enrichment program? That, that's a pretty big drop in cost in your budget for 21?
By going virtual, Ms. Lambert, we didn't need as many individuals as doing it onsite. So.
Will this impact next?
No, next. No, next summer will be a new budget. Hopefully, the budget will be done on time, not like this year where we're in a 112.
I see.
But it will not impact next summer at all.
So it's actually really.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert, I didn't hear the whole thing. I'm sorry.
And so it's actually already spent, so that's.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the additional teachers, I was just slightly confused about that because I know you said you moved some into the additional staff, but $4 million, 385. Understand what those, are those really related, or is that?
What, I'll explain about the, the best I can, Ms. Lambert. What happened is last year, because the city government and the mayor, particularly in the auditor, working on their budget and our budget, we got the 6.5 million above net school spending ahead of time. Had a line item in our budget last year for additional teachers at 4.147 million. I don't know if you remember, but at various school committee meetings throughout the year, I mean, we would go in front of the school committee. I had this staff at this school, that staff at this school. This year, that large part of money just doesn't really exist. Because, as I said previously, the budget's only going up by approximately $450,000. And you got to factor in raises and everything else. So with the substitute line item, we had a conversation, the superintendent. So with the substitute line item, we had a conversation, the superintendent, the deputy, myself, and Mr. Shaw. We just combined it all into one line item so that if we don't have to call in substitutes, and maybe we need more staff, like if we open these e-learning centers, we may have to hire people to manage these e-learning centers or to work in these e-learning centers. I know we're still bargaining some of these things with the ETA right now, so I don't want to say too much about who's going to manage these things right now with the bargaining situation, but I wish we had.
No, no, I agree.
Hire additional staff, but they're just, the money doesn't exist in the overall budget.
Well, because I just have concerns, you know, especially as we look forward to the second quarter and a hybrid model, and then going fully in-person, knowing that we are going to have absences from teachers, you know, and how do we keep that continuity for our students if we? I just don't know how we safely do that without the staff, and that's just a big drop.
Ms. Lambert, I could talk about it now, I was going to save it for the end of the presentation, but since you're concerned about money substitutes and additional personnel, just like we had a conversation about this yesterday and today. We do have a significant amount of money in some of our revolving accounts. So if we do get into trouble, especially with, if we come back to school, and we do need more substitute teachers, say, Ms. Lambert, just like your concern is, there is a significant amount of money in the revolving accounts that we could go to to help us out. So I think overall, in the overall budget, even though we're only going up by $450,000, I think we're in pretty good shape right now, to be honest with you.
Okay, no, and I get you have the benefit of the conversations, I've had a day with this book, and.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand.
And, you know, we can just, I'm sorry?
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I just, as much as we can strategize with some foresight, I just hate that revolving account. I just, I hate going back to that. You know, having a real strategy going into it, I'm sure that there is a strategy, I would just like to understand it better.
Okay, we can have a further conversation.
I know, I know more details are being worked out, so maybe we can revisit Monday.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on page one?
From the chair. Mr. Obramsky, can you explain the severance pay, again, you said is retirement and buyback of sick time?
Yeah, it's buyback and sick time, Ms. It also could possibly be, if anybody has it, Ms. Abraze, buyback on vacation, buyback. But most of it gets used, like, I'm going to say approximately the end of this year, we had about 10 teachers retire overall, either during the course of the year or at the end of the year, and I believe the teachers get $50 a day, I don't have the book in front of me, it's $50 a day, up to 130 days for every unused sick day, if they have it.
Okay, so the.
They all have different rates, Ms. Abraze, I'm not, I don't have all those.
I understand, I'm just looking at the fiscal year 2019, so that was almost half a million dollars that goes back to the prior superintendent. Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, I didn't see it, I see what you're talking about now. Yes, it does, Ms. Abraze, I see what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Ms. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, Mr. Obramsky through the chair, I had a couple of comments to piggyback on Ms. Lambert's comments, one of which is regarding substitute teachers. I understand that with remote learning, we're hoping to cut down on the need for substitutes to some degree, but the truth is that being a COVID hotspot, there's, you know, a high likelihood that we will have sick staff, and we're going to need to hire people to cover those classes because at least my personal experience with people who've gotten COVID is that they're far too ill to teach even remotely or work even remotely with the virus. So I'm assuming that that budget line would also be covering whoever is covering, whoever is covering a teacher who's out sick remotely as well?
Yes, possibly, Ms. Murray, yes. It would also cover like maternity leaves.
Right.
Illnesses, even if they weren't COVID-related.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
And then my other question is, and I think you already addressed this, is that if we end up having to hire personnel to proctor the e-learning sites, they would be coming from that line item around substitutes and additional staff, correct?
We are looking at, to see if we have grant money that could cover it too, Ms. Murray.
Okay.
Right now, we're looking at all phases. It possibly could come out of here, I don't want to say 100% because we're looking to see in a couple of the grants if we have any money left that we could possibly do that. We're still writing some of the grants right now.
Is that possible that we could cover that? I mean, I know that generally speaking, employees are not covered by COVID expenses through the state or the federal government, but in the case of like e-learning proctors, since they're not teaching salaries, is that something we could charge into that money?
Well, what we could do, Ms. Murray, if we call in a substitute additional staff, if we were going to hire e-learning people and pay them, we've had multiple conversations, whether we pay them by the hour, whether we pay them on the salary, we may have to come back to you and talk to you about having another line item.
Okay.
Early stages of that, and we're, superintendent's still negotiating some of that with the Ever Teachers Association.
And that would be something that we discuss after impact bargaining is over?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on page one? Page two. As you can see here, the total amount of money in this line item overall is increased by $239,775. One of the, the supply line item increased by $25,000. The textbooks by $254,775,000, I'll get more into that in a few minutes. Industrial arts, we really haven't been using it, so I cut the line item. We charged it all to occupational education. Band, we kept the same at $75,000. Math, we budgeted, we cut by a thousand, we cut, no, we added $1,000 for some of the things they wanted. Social studies, we cut by $1,000. Science department. Excuse me one second, science department, we added $8,000 to it. English department, level funded. Foreign language, we increased by $2,500. In principals' requests, we increased by $10,000. In graduation expenses by $2,000, based on the amount of money we spent last year in graduation. Occupational education, we cut back on some of the amount of money. Most of that are food costs related for culinary arts. If we're not going to be in school, we probably, we won't have the same food costs, at least not being in school for a while. But I'd like to talk specifically about the textbooks, that's the one that Ms. Caddillo was referring to earlier. Because of the situation we're in with the COVID-19 and the coronavirus, a lot of the materials we're buying now are online learning platforms, not necessarily the old form of textbooks. That's why that line item increased so much. Ms. Auga and the principals have been working diligently, and Mr. Shaw on this. And we've already purchased a lot of them, but we still continue to purchase. And hopefully, there'll be enough money in that line item to cover all the expenses. I may be coming back to you to move some line items. But right now, I feel comfortable with that because there's a significant amount of money in supplies and on the overall line item in this. And if we're not in school for a while, we're not going to need the same amount of supplies, we just won't. So in the whole line item, I feel very comfortable that we will be okay with this. And we're trying to see, we put some of the online learning platforms, at least some of the, on some grants, and we're still looking. We have a meeting on Friday at 11:00 to see if we can add some more to the grants. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about any of the individual line items on this page?
Ms. Murray?
So my question is in regards to what you were just talking about in terms of online platforms and applications that teachers may need to use, given the fact that we're going to be virtual for likely at least the first quarter of the school year. Is there, and I think I know the answer to this, but just for transparency's sake, is there a reason why that's lumped in under textbooks rather than parsed out into the individual departments, depending on how much money each department is planning to spend on applications and/or virtual resources for their particular subject areas?
It's funny you ask that question because we had that same conversation the other day about where to charge some of these online learning platforms. To a lot of them, Ms. Murray, are system-wide purchases. So that's why we left it there and not to the individual departments. Most of them are system-wide purchases, like K-5 or 6 to 8. There's only right now a handful that are departmentalized.
Right, but even if it was a K-5 science-like National Geographic online virtual platform that allows kids to go on virtual field trips, for example. Knowing that it was in the science and the science department budget would at least give us some sort of idea about who's spending what virtually and making sure that the money's being spread across all departments and that no one department is unfairly funded. Or it would allow us in the case of like the science department to be able to say the science budget is significantly larger because their take-home packages is significantly more expensive, you know, for chemistry and biology in high school, those kids need a ton of materials to be sent home. So I guess that's why I'm asking, the lump in under textbooks gives very little direct information about who's getting what money for support.
And I understand the question wholeheartedly, and we could go back and revisit. I wouldn't probably not be able to come up with a revised budget before tomorrow based on information that's still coming in to change these line items. Right now, Mrs. Murray, the information is still coming in on a daily basis right now on how much each department, the costs are going to be. And what we could do, Mrs. Murray, and I totally understand it, and because like I said, we had the same conversation the other day. I would suggest maybe afterwards, we create some of those line items and change some of that textbook money to these various line items. Unless you want to postpone, and the committee and Mr. Deems want to postpone the passing of this budget, and we would just need more time to be able to figure out.
I don't think that's necessary, but I.
But I understand your question wholeheartedly, Mrs. Murray. I do understand, because we had the same conversation ourselves.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
So I will come back to you with some information, hopefully next week or the week after, Ms. Murray, exactly on that topic.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
No problem at all.
If I may?
Good, Ms. Lambert?
Thank you. So I was actually going to mention, it makes more sense to parse out textbooks versus platforms, digital platforms, because as we go forward, I don't think, even when we're back in school, I don't think we're teaching the same ever again. And I think it would be good to have an overall, be able, year over year, to see what we're spending on digital platforms versus textbooks, traditional hard copy textbooks. I understand Ms. Murray's point in putting it in departments, but I'd like to see something that really details kind of the e-learning versus traditional tactile books, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I understand that, Ms. Lambert, so I did write that down, and what I will do is, I will have a conversation with the audit, the chief financial officer for the city, Mr. Deam, in the next couple of days. And when, we can come back to you at a later date and maybe create another line item and set some of those up, exactly what you and Ms. Murray were talking about, putting some in the department, some in digital platforms. But I understand, you understand much better where the actual expenses are going and what there's being spent on. I understand 100%.
Okay, and I didn't miss it that, because I was looking in the details, those are all details, I didn't see anything as far as the textbooks or principals' request. So the further details on the additional pages, those are just people, right?
After you get to page, I gotta look, give me one second. There's one more page of some expenses, then we'll all, after that, there's one more page of some expenses.
Yeah, so the detail goes into position by school, but I just wanted to make sure I was, I don't see any detail on, I was looking, so when I was looking through this last night, I was looking for, you know, the detail on textbooks or graduation, was there any break, or is that not in here?
Well, the graduation expenses, I like for the cap, well, the kids buy their own cap and gowns. It was like the stages we rented, the PA system we rented, we don't put the exact, you know, what every dollar is spent on. I mean, obviously, I don't know if that helps answer your question at all, Ms. Murray?
I just wanted to. I just wanted to make sure I'm not missing it, thank you.
But I could get any detail that you want, Ms. Murray, I mean, Ms. Lambert, I'm sorry again. I could get any detail that you would like on any of the individual line items for last year or so far this year that you would like.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on page two? Page three. Page three, overall, went down by about $434,000 altogether. Were able to cut every one of the line items significantly. Audio, visual, media, we cut by $30,000. Television programming by 13. Libraries by 2,000. And the other, two of the line items stayed the same at 1,000. Guidance, we cut by 4,000. Computer purchases and supplies, now I don't want you to think we're not buying computers because we're probably buying more than we ever bought, we cut by 250,000. In the after-school program, we did not fund at this point in time. So the significant piece there is the computer purchases and supplies because it, that $500,000 includes what we pay the vendor that oversees the tech, all the supplies for the various printers in the school system, and computer purchases. As I said, most of our computer purchases now, all the laptops, all the Chromebooks, anything in that area that we're buying, we have all those COVID-19 or coronavirus grants that we're getting, approximately 3.7 million altogether, that, those are where those purchases are going, that's why we're able to cut that line item significantly by so much money. I don't know if anyone has any questions on this particular page?
Ms. Lambert?
Can you talk more about the after-school program? And I know we didn't, so far, but why are we not budgeting for it going forward?
We had multiple conversations near the end, even in March and April, about whether we wanted to continue. And as you know, we didn't renew the contract with FKO, we didn't bring that before you. I don't know if you're aware of that, Ms. Lambert, we didn't bring that contract before you when we did the other contracts in June. We've had, we actually had a conversation today about whether, under the current situation with social distancing and all that, I don't know if it's a good idea at this point with the COVID-19 to have all these kids together in settings and maybe if we were in a better situation health-wise in the country, it may be something we look into, but at this point, you know, we may come back and look at it, but right now, we honestly just had a conversation with the mayor's office about it today. But we're still, right now, you know, we don't even have a contract with them, whether we put any money into it would be, we'd have to come back to the school committee and take some money out of a line item, but we haven't even renewed the contract at all with them for this fiscal year.
I would still, I would still think we need to budget for that, with, you know, whoever the contract is with or whatever provider we go to, you know, I know, I understand the situation we're in right now, but this would still cover March, April, hopefully. Hopefully, we're in a better position and after school. After school care is an essential service for our families, like. It's critical.
Right.
I don't.
Something. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Lambert. I'm sorry.
And so whichever provider we're with or however we do that, I still think strongly that we need to budget for it and at least. I don't want to go to a revolving account, you know, I. I want to go into this.
Honestly, we had some conversations, the superintendent, the deputy, myself and Mr. Shaw. And if we renew the contract. Um, at some point, we may. I I suggested maybe, and I don't want to answer for the superintendent. Um, or anybody else, maybe not to what in the past, Miss Lambert, I know it looks high what we gave them last year. But in the past, we were only, we started like at seventy five, we were down to fifty thousand at one point. We may. Decide to renew the contract, but not give them any money because they get significant grant money. They get they charge fees. Maybe they could fund it on their own. But I don't want to say is that's not totally my decision. That's a decision of. The central office would be the mayor, you know, the mayor's office would have some say and you people would have some say honestly on what you want to do with that problem. If you feel. That strongly, maybe you should have a conversation with myself, Mr. Shaw, the deputy and the superintendent.
Absolutely, and. Because as you know, we rebuild and hopefully. I know everyone talks about the new normal, but as our families work and that after. Is critical. And I understand, you know, with the century twenty one grant, that there are other ways, but I just think that it's something we need to plan for, so if we can. Take that offline, I'm happy to.
Yeah. But um, I will have a conversation with the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, Mr. Shaw in the next few days, and I can get back to you with some information, Ms. Lambert.
That'd be great. Thank you.
No problem at all.
Ms. Murray.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, so I'm looking at the line item for libraries and while I'm all about cost saving, seeing that we're saving costs in the library column is not thrilling me to death. Can you talk a little bit about, I mean, I already think we aren't spending enough money on our school libraries. So can you say a little bit more about that?
In the last. I'm going to say three years, Ms. Murray, maybe two years. This could be the third year coming up. We haven't had librarians except.
I know.
And they're not, they weren't budgeted for. They, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think that where we, that part of the reason they weren't requested by the principals, Ms. Murray, is to be honest, because of the overcrowding situation in our schools. Lot of the. Schools are using the libraries as classrooms or as testing centers. Whether it's access testing or whether it's M C A S testing. Um, that's why there isn't a significant budgeted amount there because the library, at least in the elementary schools, the libraries just aren't getting used as much as they had in the past. I'm not saying.
So how do we reverse that situation? How do we change that situation?
I think part of it is we need more space for our students. Like another building so that we can open those libraries back up. I mean, in, I mean, in all the, I I'm going to say all the schools, Mrs. Murray, I I I could be off by one. But they're all using a library either for a class or some are using them for two classrooms. They want wall dividers. Um, but they're being used for other purposes. I'm not saying it's a good thing. It's just because of the overcrowded situation in our schools.
Okay, so so that's something that. We're going to need to address because that's not, it's just not okay. It's not okay that the libraries are being used as testing sites and or classrooms at this point.
No, and I agree. We spent all that money at the Pollen School a few years ago that the in capital money that the mayor and the city council appropriated. And it's being used mostly as a testing center right now.
Well, there's a direct, there's a direct correlation between students' accessibility to books and their literacy levels. And in a working class city. Kids need access to libraries on a regular basis, so. Um, yeah, I'll yield to Ms. Lambert or Ms. Cardillo.
Uh, Ms. Cardillo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go back to what Ms. Lambert was talking about. I strongly feel that we should at least budget something. Wasn't it like two hundred and fifty thousand we agreed to last year that we gave them? On our portion where the city wasn't paying anything?
I think the amount is right there, Ms. Cardillo. We budgeted a hundred and thirty five and then we gave another two hundred thousand sometime, I think, in October or November. Gave them a total three hundred and thirty five thousand.
Right, I would feel more comfortable if we budgeted instead of having to go look for it later. Knowing that it's in the line item and if we don't need it, but I'm saying when we go back to school. Whatever vendor that we're using, we're going to need to know that we have that money set aside for that because it's such an important program. I would, I would like to see a figure in there, Mr. Abramski and Ms. Taliani.
School committee and I yield to the chairman and the vice chairman. To amend this section of the budget and ask me to look at the line items with the superintendent to make a change to the budget.
So what do we need? We need, it sounds like Ms. Cardillo, Ms. Lambert, Ms. Murray want to make. Uh, some sort of a motion to amend this. Uh, I recall that we had budgeted and then they came before us that they needed an additional, they needed more money or else. Uh, they were in dire straits allegedly and we gave them an additional two hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct, Mr. Aprise. What happened is they lost a significant amount of grant money. Um, so they came back to us and asked us for some more money, so we did budget a hundred and thirty five originally. Give them another two hundred sometime, I believe in October or November for a total of three hundred and thirty five thousand out of our own, our regular budget last year.
Right.
How many kids does that cover?
I'm I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Murray.
So so assumably to cover kids whose families can't provide whatever the amount of money is, or how does that work?
It is for what they call scholarships, Ms. Murray. For exactly what you said, kids that can't afford. Off the top of my head, Mrs. Murray, it might be because they all pay different rates.
Right.
It's a different. I honestly forget the total amount because every kid pays, some of them are full scholarship, some of them are on a partial scholarship based on what the parent can pay.
Okay. Okay.
So, Ms. Lambert, going back to Ms. Lambert, sorry, I get you next, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
My apologies. I just wanted to jump in. Library line item, so. The only librarian in the budget is for the high school, correct?
She's the whole district.
The whole district, okay.
She's responsible for the whole district.
So, you know, I don't. I think we've learned quite a bit that we don't necessarily need physical space, although physical books our teachers do need as far as parental reading. Um. And curating that media literacy, that all falls under librarians. So, you know, just food for thought. We don't necessarily need food for. Space. For librarian to be. And to be able to curate. Books and, you know, get those books into teachers and students' hands. So I know. This budget, it it's a weird budget year. I understand, but just food for thought, I think we really should reconsider. Um, adding librarians regardless. And I think there's a a place for that. Thank you, sorry.
In terms of budget items. Uh, and I don't, I don't think I'm jumping ahead here, but with the M I A A's ruling in terms of. Uh, football program, no one's playing football this fall. How does that affect? Uh, the line item in terms of going back to athletics? As and related to now with. What? Uh, my sisters here are requesting with the after school program. And the food for thought with the libraries.
I give you what I know, Mr. Aprise, so far on that. Right now, we haven't added, audited any of the equipment for the fall sports yet. Uh, based on last year, the only thing we did do, Mr. Aprise, because it has to get, some of the equipment has to get reconditioned. But that went out to get reconditioned, but additional equipment hasn't been audited. You would save money in obviously referees, transportation, coaches. Um, we did have a conversation today about possibly hiring the coaches because, Mr. Aprise, to the best of my knowledge. From listening to the news and reading what I can in the, listening to people in the last, in the last twenty four hours, they're planning on starting football in February?
Uh, M I A is going to allow all the fall sports except for football. Football, they're going to try to fit football in February to April.
Right.
That is their plan.
So if that does happen, now, nobody can predict what's going to happen under the current situation we're in. We may have no sports. Once you start, people could get sick. You don't know what's going to happen. We could have significant savings in the line item, Mr. Aprise. We could end up with no savings in the line item. I would say we're going to save something. You know what I mean? I would say it's next to impossible that we're not going to save anything, but to come up with a exact, I had figured out before, Mr. Aprise. That we didn't have any fall sports at all, accounting equipment, transportation, coaches. Anything that come up, but we would save between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy five thousand, just with no fall sports. That's not just out of panic. Some of those, um, the salaries come out of the extracurricular line item.
Okay. Okay, like I said, I know for, I know for a fact the ruling is that there's going to be no football this fall. In Massachusetts, so.
That's correct, and I heard the same thing. I heard the same thing.
So, uh, you know, the other spot, I'm just looking in terms of. Uh, trying to fix the square peg in the square hole here and. Uh, you know, where there's a concern about using these revolving accounts. Uh, you know, I'm just looking to try to, uh, I'm not a numbers person, just trying to make this as easy as possible and. Again, maybe, Mr. Parker, going back to you, I know you want to talk on the, uh, this issue, if you could.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we got in the, the funding of the after school program. I just want to remind the body that if you want to add to that line item. You have to delete elsewhere within the budget. Um, the important thing is that, you know, we keep it balanced at eighty five million dollars. Uh, regarding sports, our entire athletic budget historically has been four hundred thousand dollars a year. Well, it sounds like a lot of money in comparison to eighty five million, it's not. Um, you know, so. Even if we had no athletics whatsoever. You know, that would certainly fund an after school program, but. So my point, my point of matter is, is that if you want to add a line item, you need to come up with. Uh, where you're going to subtract from, so the bottom line number stays the same. Now also too, and you know, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you know, the, the, these are static line items. Um, we can, we can pull and transfer throughout the year, say, from. I don't know, audio, visual to an after school program if need be. Again, just keeping the bottom line the same. And just to, just to clarify too, regarding revolving accounts, we hear that a lot. But. You know, our revolving account is pretty much can only be used for, for that particular item. Um, we can't take money out of the cafeteria account to pay for more teachers. So I just want to bring that to the table because we have to be wary of that one too.
And that's my concern, Mr. Parker, is making sure that. I know we have to be flexible. There are going to be things that we don't spend that we anticipated, but there. I don't want to, you know, because we did hear. It as far as the revolving account, so I just want to make sure, and I understand, hopefully, there's an after school program, there's another twenty first century grant and. That's funding our students. And that's not, but if there isn't, I know that the state's in a different situation, as is the city, as is, you know, so I just want to go in. And. You, maybe I need to be more flexible given the state of the situation. I'm just trying to understand, you know, where some of that give and take is. And go into this as prepared and strategically as possible. Also, my first budget, so thank you for your patience.
Understood, so therefore, you know, in closing, if you wanted to fund. The after school program, level funded to last year, three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, we need to find three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of cuts within this budget. Um, in this time period, maybe these meetings. So.
Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
So, so I think I'm a little bit more comfortable with sitting on the after school account because it does get funded by other sources. Um. We cut a significant portion of spending when we got rid of that external cleaning company for the high school. So would that not be able to fund at least five librarians?
May I? So, um, to your point, could it fund five librarians? Very likely it could. Um, that being said, we probably have now filtered because we took our bottom line with those, that cut in in mind and have filtered the money accordingly. Um, I think to your, you know, this budget is sort of a. It is an interesting one and we have had to make some difficult judgment calls. I think the point about substitutes is very well taken and we will take that back. But when I'm thinking about librarians, and I will admit that when I first came into this district to find out that there was one librarian was very shocking and that was something that. When we were talking about S O A money was the first, one of the first things that I had on my list. That being said, I also want us to be cognizant of the fact that we are starting remote and what really is on our mind as we're making this budget is our new staffing. And the capacity of that staffing and what they're going to be doing in a remote environment.
Except, except that I see librarians as a significant resource in a remote system.
Uh, understood, and Ms. Pulio has actually been doing a lot of work to get us resources that we are going to be pushing out. Digital libraries that we are getting for free. We're having a book drive. So there are different ways that we are trying to leverage our current librarian, and I know it's just one, but in order to get. Those materials out. Um, and we also are going to though be leaning on our teachers, leaning on our E L A teachers. Um, you know, we can think more about what a librarian, what what the actual job description would be, not just for a librarian right now. Like in general, because I know what that looks like, but a librarian that's starting in a remote period and to get them transitioned into a school district. To get them out with students and connecting with students, you know, we know already that the teachers have had difficulty in the past, making sure that attendance is good, they're connecting with their students. Um, and so. You know, we're, I'm just very wary of adding, you know, new layers of personnel that they are not used to working with or that we haven't leveraged before during a time when. They're going to be remote. I mean, I I completely hear your point and would it, could we absolutely use them if we, if we had them? Yes. Are we also trying to figure out how to staff our e-learning centers so that families have a place to send their, um, their children during eight and two thirty? Yes, and that is a challenge right now as well. And so when I'm even thinking about after school programming, we are making, again, some judgment calls about. What's more important right now? Is it thinking about after school from March to May, or is it thinking about getting? Five percent more families in our e-learning centers, um, because we have the staff to cover it between eight and two thirty from. Um, from, you know. Not from now until mid-November. And so I know that we have made some, some judgment calls here because right now our, our priority is. Staffing those centers so that we can make sure that families have somewhere right now for, for their students to go and so that we can serve our most vulnerable populations in our school buildings. Starting in September.
Um, but I do think according to the health crisis and the numbers that we have to be careful. Regardless of how much personnel we have to cover those e-learning centers, we have to be careful how many students we admit. Period for the sake of safety and social distancing, no?
Oh, absolutely, but. It is, again, depending on our impact bargaining, it may be a challenge to staff them.
Okay.
And and so at that point, it's a promise we've made to the community and right now we are making. Contingency plans, which is kind of what you're seeing right now in front of you of. Of how we are going to staff them no matter what. And I think that's what I'm saying. And and if 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 we're in a better position to staff them. And I think that's what I'm saying. And, and if, if, if we're in a better position to staff them after impact bargaining and after, you know, as things unravel, I do think that we will then be able to repurpose some of these funds, but we really are trying to plan for sort of a worst-case scenario, which is kind of what we feel like we're, we might be up against in, in two to three weeks.
Okay, all right, I can understand that and respect that. Thank you.
If I may, and it, sorry, Ms. Cardella. It, would it be appropriate, given the situation, and like I said, my first, I was all gung-ho ready in March for our budget, to reconvene in September, October to look at, you know, what has been spent, what is and then, so is it better at that point, you know, we know the dollars are the dollars? We know what we need to do for two weeks or three, three weeks from now? And then reconvene after school begins, we have a better understanding of what's where and what the situation is as we go into November in that second quarter, possible hybrid area?
I do, if I may answer, I do think this is a year that we're gonna need to revisit it a few times. And we actually had already planned for, after school started, perhaps towards the end of September, to really revisit the grants, seeing how that grant funding has fallen. And then again, that is going to change around how we're currently looking at our budget. But we're not prepared to put that, th- those dollars out yet as far as like what we've received. So I do think that this is gonna be a year where we're gonna need to, to be a little more fluid in this process and check in because I do think that there's going to be, as we've seen, there's significant change, all that, like right now, today is a day that now we're thinking about expenses for flu shots that is not indicated here because we just found out about it today. This is, this is going to be a year where we are going to be moving funds, reprioritizing funds, hopefully getting grants to cover things and getting, you know, items reimbursed through some of this, you know, state and federal funding. So I do think that it does make sense for us to, to, to come back and have a a continuous conversation about this throughout the year.
And I, I agree, and so, especially for the viewing public, anybody watching this, but our families, our students, it's teachers that have asked us to go into this year with certain things. I want them to know that we are looking at them, but at the same time, there are so many question marks, which they understand it as well, that it will be kind of a living process and a little bit different than years past. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman?
Parker?
I, I would certainly agree with Ms. Lambert's remarks. You know, this is a working document, and, you know, moving forward, let's treat it as such. Instead of just like, you know, on, you know, a monthly basis or a bi-weekly basis, you know, getting an overall run rate. If we could look at this maybe on a quarterly basis at a minimum, at, say, if you tip of the page, looking at, at this point, you know, what did we spend so far? What's the run rate? What's it look like? So we can start seeing some, some trends either way. The challenge is though, is that, you know, will we have the, the program or the resources to do that? And I'm hoping that, you know, with some changes in the way we manage our, our budget and our finances, those will be coming soon too, so I wholeheartedly agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Cardella, there you are.
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll concede with the libraries, I understand that. And I know that we will come up with money for it when we need it. But on the after-school program, actually, all we'd really have to put in there would be 135,000, not the 335, because that's money that they came back bought after the fact. So our initial commitment would only be 135. Whether we have the program or not, whether we have FKO or not, we're gonna have, at some point, we will be going back in person and we will need some after-school program. And it's just makes me more comfortable seeing it there on a, in the budget line item. And if we even had to take it, and I know I'm probably gonna get my house egg for saying this, but even if we had to take some of that out of the sports because we're not gonna be having sports as we have known them in the past, perhaps we could just put it in that line item and keep everything even. Going back to what Mr. Parker said, if we do move money, we have to take it from somewhere to put it somewhere else. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cardella. Oh, where are we?
Mr. Chairman, do we want to go to page four, or does somebody wanna, does somebody want to make a motion to put money here? I'm just trying to figure.
Well, it's a, it, it sounds as if the committee, the majority of committee is looking for somewhere to come up with 135,000 to put in this after-school program. As Mr. Parker pointed out, it's going to have to be taken from somewhere else.
Mr. Chairman, just a suggestion, do we want to go through the next couple of sections? See if they see anything in there and then come back? Maybe, because we've only done, only on the second section right now, and see if they see anything else coming up that they might be ever want to change, or go back, I'm just, just a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree to that because we still have a long way to go with this.
Okay. All right, well, like I said, I know for a fact there's one item that you know, at least for you know, it may come back in February, but whatever the, whatever the amount of money spent toward football is, if it can be figured out individually as a sport, that should be available, so go ahead, Mr. Obremsky, if you want to go to the next page and we'll figure this out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So now I'll go to instructional page four. These, just remember, these are budgeted figures from last year going to this year. It doesn't necessar- it would include those four, because it's gonna look like it jumped a lot and we have all this money. You gotta remember, we had that 4.147 million, so the individuals weren't listed in the specific school at the time. So I will go and review this. Right now, the Adams School is going by, down by two staff for fiscal year 21. The Devon School, they're all in special education. There's no non-special education teachers there that would be in this section of the budget in the Devon School as a regular teacher. The English School is up by three staff. The Kavarian, up by eight. The Lafayette, up by 10. Powellen stayed the same, that was rarely a space issue. They'd like more staff, just nowhere to put them. The Webster School, it looks like it was a cut, don't think it was a cut in the book last year, you didn't have the Webster School extension, it was all combined into one school. So those nine people just got shifted to the Webster School extension. The Whittier School, up by four. Everett High School, down one. Alternative Education looks like a big jump too, but those people are now in vocational education or CTE. So Alternative Education last year had eight, this year has one. Last year Vocational had 12, now they have 18. That's with the additional shops we opened at the high school. And Specialized, which is like your art, your music, your technology, it's up by nine. It went from 465 to 493. And it went up by a little bit over 3.1 million dollars overall. When you look at the administrators. The administrators is, excuse me, one second. Just give me one second, I apologize. There is a, a couple of type of mistakes on this, and I do apologize here on the administrator's section, and I will correct these. The assistant principals at the high school, that should be zero requests for fiscal year 21. The principal is one, the vice principal is one, the assistant principal, where the number five is, that should be a zero. And I do apologize for that. Elementary principal, six is correct. Devon School, one. Elementary assistant principal, five, and director is four. And the director B should be zero also. I do apologize for that. And the salaries are correct. So the administrator's salary went way down from a beginning number of $3 million for fiscal '20 to only 2.4 million dollars in fiscal '21. Kind of almost 6 million, 600,000 dollars there, I'm sorry, almost 600,000 dollars. I do apologize for that, I'm sorry about that. I will correct that. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, but the assistant principals at the high school, we're going back to the old dean model, so now they're in the, the assistant principals are now in the teachers bargaining unit as deans. And the director B was the data processor who did most of the EPMs and submissions to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the district. Right now, that individual, honestly, we hired somebody that will not be in any bargaining unit. Just a regular employee at will. We, we hired somebody to do that at a less salary, to do that same job. And they're in the budget, they're on the front page of the budget book in central administration. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this section, but I do apologize for that mistake.
Questions, anybody? No?
No, so the rest of this section, I don't know if you want to go, if there's no question, I can't see, Mr. Appertizay, is there any questions from anybody? I'm sorry.
I don't hear anyone, so, next.
Okay. Right now, just so everybody is aware, the vice principal of the high school, the position is still open. That was the previous vice principal's salary, so we're not sure if that person will come in higher or lower. In the assistant principal of the Powellen, it's like a placeholder, the assistant principal of the Powellen has not been filled as of yet. That salary for the one assistant principal of the Powellen is a placeholder. I don't know if it's necessary to go through the, all the pages, the rest of the pages in this section, because it's just a backup. The only thing, I don't know if anyone wants to look at, because it may come into play later, and I can go to it. But I'll wait for a response through the chair. We could skip to page 21, which we can talk about what Mr. Appertizay was talking about, where some of these coaches are. Maybe we can find a cut in here to fund that after-school program.
Mr. Chairman?
For all the individual pages, I don't mind, I just don't know whether it's necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion to move on to the section entitled Special Ed. Beginning Athletics, I'd rather wait until we hit to that section and look at it from the, from the, the micro view as opposed to the macro, if we're looking to, you know, find significant savings.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parker. A motion was made to move to a section on Special Education. Anyone second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, move to section on Special Education. Roll call vote please, Addy.
Mr. Appertizay?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, motion passes, we're on to Special Education section, Mr. Obremsky.
Yep, I'm just trying to pull it up on the screen, give me one second, Mr. Appertizay.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. So Special Education, teachers' salaries, it looks like a significant increase here. We went from, we're up by 2.5 million dollars, but as I explained earlier, we did add 14 teachers that were on, which previously the IDA are the 240 grant. We took them off the 240 grant for 14 additional teachers in this section. Took them off the 240 and took money, and switched money from tuition to the 240 grant. So the tuition line item will go down significantly, and that saves us approximately 110,000 dollars in what's called mass teacher retirement money in the 240 grant. So it looks like it jumped a lot, but overall, it did jump a little bit, but not as significant as it would have normally. Administrative overtime, we didn't budget anything this year or last year. This is another section that maybe we can fix through negotiations, miscellaneous pay of perfect attendance, we budgeted the same amount, 4,500. Administrator's salary, up 13,000 dollars, that's just because of raises in steps. Administrative assistants, up by 5,000 dollars, that has to do with the raises they got. Para-professionals, we were able to cut this significantly by 594,000. This, so you know, most of the translators that were with us last year were considered in the paraprofessional unit. We are now reorganizing, and we advertise for what's called family liaisons now, which those will be the individual, so speak out the languages that work with the families in Everett. We're gonna hire approximately 15 of them. We'll believe we're going to be able to pay for that out of a grant. So that's why there's such a significant cut in the para money in this line item. Substitutes, this is substitute paraprofessionals, or it also could say additional paraprofessionals because you never know when a special education student moves into the district. And when they move into the district, it's, if they have a one-on-one aid already in their IEP, we're required to provide that one-on-one aid. That's why I always leave some money there, because it does happen every single year. Applied Behavioral Analysis, so those are people that do ABA work with significantly challenged or special education students that's up by 5,000, a little over 5,000 dollars, and therapeutic crisis interventionists because our individual change who used to be on there actually went down a little bit by 22,000 dollars. Overall, that line item was up by about 1.9 million dollars, but a lot of it is because of those 14 salaries that got moved over from the grant. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on this section?
I don't hear any.
Okay. If we have permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd go to page two.
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Page two, Special Education, General Expenditures. We have a clinical line item that will remain the same. That's mostly futures, which we pay out of this line item, which you, most of yous know do a P, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy with our students. And we also pay some outside psychologists and psychiatrists to come in to do some work once in a while with our students. So that's what's paid, that comes out of that 3.1 million dollar line item. Independent Evaluation and Consultants, we haven't used them in the last couple of years, so we decided not to fund that line item. Special Education, tuition, we budgeted a lot last year, we had a significant savings in that line item, so we're able to cut that by a total of 1.7 million dollars. The Devon School is helping us out a lot, as well as some of our artistic programs that we have in district. We're able to keep a lot more students in-house. Gateway to College Program at Bunker Hill Community College, we cut by 75,000 dollars in the vision and hearing at zero. In Special Education Transportation, even though we only spent 4.2 million, we're still gonna budget 4.5 million. And the reason for that is, the city just renegotiated the contract with the vendor. And the vendor, especially for the out-of-district, not so much the in-district students, but the out-of-districts, he hadn't gone up on some of the costs in a number of years. He's gone up over, he's going up over the next couple of years in some of that. That's why we kept the same amount of money at 4.5 million dollars because of an increased cost to his contract. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this section?
Oh, Ms. Lambert, go ahead.
Thank you. Do we anticipate any increase?
Thank you, do we anticipate any increase in requests for out-of-district based on the remote model? Or have we seen that?
I'm not aware of any, Ms. Lambert, at this point in time. I'd have to really have a conversation with Mr. Donahue, the special ed director, but I did talk to Mr. Donahue today, honestly, about some issues and I talked to Donna Sweeney, the out-of-district coordinator, I had talked to her in a while the other night on the phone to see how things were going. And she hasn't, she didn't talk to me about any additional requests.
Okay, and just secondly, because I know our sub-separate program and some programs will be in-person. Is that accounted for in the building or special education budget, just from my own understanding?
Can you repeat that question, could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
I know that some special ed programs, the sub-separate, especially will be prioritized for in-person learning come September. Is any additional increases building budget, or is that in the special education budget?
I'm right, that would be part of the overall budget, like if we were bringing the substantially separate students back. And I actually, I just had this conversation with Billy Donahue, I don't know if it was today or yesterday, the special ed director. He's, the state still is not sure, according to Mr. Donahue, what the plan is going to be. So we haven't added any additional staff or planned for any at this point, because my conversation with Mr. Donahue, I forget whether it was yesterday or today, but I literally just had that same conversation. He's not sure what the plan is going to be. The reason I asked him, to be honest with you, I got a call from the transportation company wanting to know what was going on with schools, so I reached out to Mr. Donahue. And everything's still up in the air.
Okay, so, but, so we would see that reflected in the
It would be in the special education portion of the budget.
Special education overall.
Whether it was in teachers or anything like that, the only thing that would be, if we had the remote learning centers that wouldn't come out of special education, if we had anybody working those remote learning centers that wasn't paid on a grant, that would come out of
I was more thinking of physical space, like outfitting, you know, so if we're bringing students back and we need, you know, barriers outside of the PPE, but if we need additional barriers or, you know, so outside of the staffing, special ed teacher line item.
Barriers like that, Ms. Lambert, we would be taking out of a grant that we have applied for some of those type things you're looking for out of maintenance budget.
Okay, alright, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
No problem.
Ms. Murray?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Obremsky, perhaps I misunderstood you, but if you're talking about how you budgeted a $300,000 increase for school year 2021 in anticipation of a raised cost. Would that $300,000 not be exactly the amount of money we're looking for for the after-school budget?
Well, yes, but Ms. Murray, that is a separate line item. Special education, education is a separate line item. If we didn't request that amount of money, I'm not sure, and I'm not a lawyer, I'm not sure we could transfer that money to another section of the budget.
Do we know that this company is going to be asking for this amount of money?
He may be able to answer that question, Mr. Demus, but I'm not sure we could transfer that money to another line item. I think we'd have to give it back to the city. I think, I don't think, I don't think on a request upfront, I'm not sure if we could do that. To be quite honest with you.
Okay.
And I can reach out to him, but I'm not sure if we could do that. I can, if he's not on the call still, I could reach out to him tomorrow and ask him, I have a call with him at 10 o'clock tomorrow, I could ask him that question, Ms. Murray.
So is that an anticipated cost, or is that a cost we know is coming?
If we were in school, the whole school year, Ms. Murray, at the 180 days, that would be the anticipated cost for the year.
Okay, alright, so theoretically, it may not even be worth pursuing, because we may need that money anyway? Or it may be worth pursuing, because we may not need that money, all of that money there? Sorry, that was a question my
You remember last year, even though the vendor wasn't transporting students. Department of Elementary Education had multiple telephone calls with vendors, with assistant superintendent, business manager superintendents in regards, more in regards to large transportation companies, we don't transport anybody that's non-special ed except for homeless.
Right.
Pay some of their costs, so they don't go out of business.
Right, but we're talking about $4,500,000 versus $4,200,000.
Correct, so
This is not, I mean, that's not a significant amount of money in terms of their line item, but it would be a significant amount of money in terms of benefit that we could offer our families in terms of support.
Right, it goes back to what I think, and I don't want to answer for sure, but I think Mr. Parker was saying, and when the superintendent was talking. You know, a lot of these line items, because of the situation that we're in this year and we're in since March, are going to change this year. We're going to have multiple finance meetings and go back to the school committee and revisit some of these line items, so
I'm just trying to find places to cut that $300,000, that's all.
No, I totally understand, but I honestly think, Ms. Murray, if we wait, like the superintendent said, I think and we decide the after-school program is going to open and everything gets better, that we may have some of that savings. If the transportation company isn't going to transport the students right away, we are not going to pay them the full salary or there's other costs that we may not incur, like if we're not in school and you don't know how long that's going to be for. We're not going to have the same lighting costs, the same heat costs. There's a lot of things that are fluid right now. I'm not telling you not to change a line item, I would never do that, that's why you people were elected. But a lot of things, I think, this particular year are going to change significantly and it's much too early, based on the situation, like Mr. Abraze said. Like football is going to get moved to, right now to February. By February, we don't have any idea what it's going to be like here, everything could be fine.
Right, right, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to argue that, the only thing I'm arguing
Just talking.
Right, right, of course, but what I'm saying is that if we are looking to make sure that we have some kind of nest egg in that after-school budget line, so that when we need it, we have money allocated for that. That we should be looking at this plan with an eye for where we can pull from to put into, because it's just as easy to say, drop this to 4.3 instead of 4.5 and put $200,000 in the after-school care, as it is to say, leave the after-school at a zero and keep this at a 4.5. At least there would be money in the after-school surround care budget, which I think my colleagues would feel a lot more comfortable if there was at least some sort of nest egg in that slot for a rainy day, because we know the rainy day is coming.
Correct.
But I don't want to speak for Ms. Cardillo or Ms. Lambert, because this was really, you know, what they were talking about, but if I'm looking for places to cut money, that just looks like a spot where it might, might work, that's all.
I'd like to think the rainy day's already come, Ms. Murray. Along those lines, Mr. Obremsky, why don't you at least, along the lines of what Ms. Murray's asking, see in your meeting with Mr. Demus, see if that is a legal possibility to transfer the money where we, you know, and we don't have to basically give it back to the city.
Yeah, I will
If that's an option.
Absolutely, Mr..
Thank you.
The city may also be willing to forego their reclaiming of that money, given the fact that it would be going directly to benefit, you know, high-needs parents.
That's what I'm hoping they would do, Ms. Murray, so that's a conversation that I'll have with Mr. Demus and I'm sure he will have a conversation with the mayor after that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on page two?
Next.
Page three. Page three is the number of staff. As you can see, special education has increased drastically from 96 to 126. You've got to take into the 14 individuals that I talked to you about, but it's just the significant needs of our students in our district. At this point, that's the, that's, I mean, besides the 14, I mean, that's, that's increased by 30 people, you take the 14, it's still increased by 16 individuals for $2.5 million. The directors, little increase, that's just an increase in salary at $13,000 in steps. The two clerical, secretary administrative assistant by $5,000. But the biggest thing here is the number of teacher aides, just so you know, went from 99 to 71. Were able to cut that drastically and we still left some aides on the 240 grant. It doesn't affect any of their retirement money, or we don't lose any retirement money, so we cut 593,000 or 600,000 in the teacher aid. The ABA specialists remain the same at four and four. Increase of five, little over $5,000 in therapeutic crisis interventionists, we cut one for, decrease of $22,837. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the number of staff?
Next.
The rest of, the rest of this section is just a repeat, really, of what we have gone over on pages one, two and three. I don't know if anybody wants me to review them, or we want to move on to athletics, I'd be happy to do, as the board, at the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Just a question in general regarding special education. So special education performs a lot of the tasks that we get reimbursed on from a Medicaid standpoint. And as you know, of course, and, you know, from my colleagues, we perform you know, we take action, we pay somebody to submit the paperwork, we get reimbursed, and then it goes into the general fund. In the last couple of years, because of the generosity of the city, the mayor, with, you know, monies over and above net school spending. The Medicaid money has stayed within the general fund. As we're looking for sources of more revenue, such as being able to fund an after-school program. Has there been any discussion as far as what the process will be, as far as Medicaid reimbursement? Now, I know it's not going to be the $1.4, $1.5 million that was in the past, because of, you know, we're not going to be in school, but still, you know, even a, even a quarter of that would be significant. So has there been any
I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, continue, I'm sorry.
So has there been any discussion as far as, you know, Medicaid in fiscal year 20?
I did have a conversation with Mr. Demus a few weeks ago about that, and maybe even last week. And honestly, he still, they haven't decided, they're still trying to figure out, we had a conversation today, the mayor, the superintendent, myself and a few other individuals, as regards to how much the school department is actually going to be on the taxpayers, Mr. Parker. So a lot of it depends on how much of this overall he has to get from the taxpayers, if he can do that. I don't think they're ready to give us an answer on that yet. But they are, we are aware that we are looking for it, Mr. Parker, as well as anything above net school spending, they are fully aware that we are looking for.
Okay, and just for the record, I mean, the city's contribution is going up year on year. Right?
Yes.
I mean, it's going from 30, 30.6 million to 35.4 million.
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, bye, thank you.
Ms. Murray?
How much over foundation is the city actually offering?
Hold on one second, Ms. Murray, okay, hold on one second. And go back to that section if you give me a minute. So Ms. Murray, right now, the foundation budget for 21, fiscal year 21 from the state, is 109,071. The net school spending is actually 110,436. So it's a little less than 1.3 million. Giving us a net, other than in foundations, a little less than 1.3 million.
So are you saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, that we're actually losing money by not getting the Medicaid reimbursements? Because we would actually get more back?
No, no, not at all, because the Medicaid reimbursement fluctuates so much, as Mr. Parker, who's been around for a while, knows. Way back when, we were getting almost 1.6, 1.7 million, there's no requirement at all for the city to give us the money.
No, but it's, but it's, but it's in many, many, many districts, it's common practice that the districts, I mean, that the city hands the money directly to the district.
Honestly
Not unusual.
Since I've been here, I'm original
If it does whatever it does, I'm saying in the rest of the state of Massachusetts.
No, I agree, and the mayor and the auditor, no matter who the auditor was, but particularly Mr. Demus, they've given us either above net or the Medicaid money, the complete Medicaid money, not just, originally, and Mr. Parker may have been on the board of Mr. Abraze, the city would take the first 590, if I remember, either 590 or 594 towards the tax, and we'd get the rest. Since at least 2010, I'm going to say, maybe off a year or two, we've gotten the whole Medicaid amount, or way above net school spending, Ms. Murray, where we got the money upfront. So I think it's a conversation we have to continue, but I don't think, based on the situation that we're in since March, the reimbursements, and who knows what's going to happen in this school year, the reimbursements will be the same. Right now, at net school spending, with my professional opinion, we're way better off than foundation.
Okay.
Can I add to that?
Go ahead.
So when, in fiscal year 18, as a result of the meltdown, the city contributed an extra $5 million towards education. And they were like 108% net school spending that year. And then, you know, things changed come fiscal year 19 in that the city started giving us the money upfront, so instead of going back at, you know, back later in the school year asking for the Medicaid reimbursement, they're actually giving us upfront. So in fiscal year 19, it was like $6 million over above net school spending, of which a component was, you know, the upfront paying of the Medicaid reimbursement. The same thing in fiscal year 20 was $6.5 million over above net school spending. You know, with the thinking is, you know, we're going to be proactive and from a city hall standpoint. Look at what your requirements are, including Medicaid. So we're going to give it to you now in September, therefore, you know the word, but in May, so when it comes back to us, it's going to stay in the general fund. And it would kind of perpetuate, and we were kind of like in that, in that rotation, but of course, as we all know, you know, state revenue goes down, city's revenue goes down, it's a whole different ballgame.
I agree 100%, Mr. Parker, it's much better to get it upfront and get it later, much better.
You know, again, it's a whole different ballgame, and we still need to have the Medicaid conversation, though.
Yeah, absolutely, I won't let it go. I don't know if anyone has any other questions, the rest of the sections, really just to repeat, the rest of the pages in this section of what we've already covered. I don't know if people want me to go through them, or you want to go to athletics.
I suggest we go to athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just give me one second to pull it up on the screen. This section is athletics, general expenditures, these are all the purchases of equipment. And I'll go through some of the pages afterwards here, but mostly it's equipment, it's also league fees. Cleaning and repair of equipment, transportation costs. And what's called, there's something called, what's called the huddle, that is used in various sports, it's so you can watch film of the other teams. This whole section includes ice rental for hockey, all things like that, but it's mostly all equipment in this section. We, it's increased by $32,000. And if you go to page two, it breaks it down a little bit on page two, I'll pull it up on the screen. On page two, it has the various costs there, Mr. Abraze, and then you can see a significant difference right there on one sport, right at the top. But if you look at all these expenses, these are the various expenses of all the, all the equipment and needs of the teams that we have at $276,000. There's also physical education equipment at $46,277. Now, if we're not going to have school, maybe we don't need all that physical education equipment. The banners, everyone's familiar with the banners that we buy for the seniors at the high, school. The championship honors and senior recognitions, this is a new line item that Mr. Norman and Ms. Turner recommended to buy some paraphernalia for the, particularly for the seniors who are graduating if you win a championship in a sport. We're one of the few school systems who actually give free physicals to all our students to make sure that they are healthy and able to play. So that's the cost of the physicals and medical supplies requested by the two trainers. At about $57,000, now that increased a little bit this year and some of that is COVID-related. For a total of $432,733, just so everybody is aware, the coaches are not paid out of this line item. So the coaches are in a different section of the budget in instructional and extracurricular activities, just so everybody is aware. I don't know if anyone has any questions, or we could go through page by page if you want of each sport. I'll go on the recommendation of the board.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a question?
All right, and see you, Ms. Cardello.
That's good, thank you. To Mr. Obramsky. On that line item with medical supplies, have we gotten some grant money through COVID if some of these items are COVID-related?
Got some grant money, but not particularly for what the trainers would probably be looking for. A little bit of disinfectant and stuff like that, Miss Cardillo, but a lot of it is just for injuries that happen and things like that. Some of it we did miss, but I wouldn't say more than $10,000 worth. You know, knowing what, what, what they, what they asked for.
Okay, thank you, and one more question to the chair, to anybody that might answer this, are we going to be able to have wrestling this year?
All the sports that are in trouble are the ones with intense physical contact. So I think you can realize that would be probably number one on the list to not be played.
Right.
I would, I would say football, hockey. Unfortunately, I mean, basketball. And, I mean, wrestling would be, to me, wrestling would be the first one that would be out.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, just what we're looking at here, and I mean, they can, again, the MIAA could say all they want that we're going to transfer these into spring sports. Well, problem with trying to make a fall sport into a spring sport is there's only so many fields. And I'm, I'm not sure how that plan would work out. February football, I'm not too sure is, you know, going to work out too well, but that's just my take on it. Again, I guess the question is, Mr. Obramsky, right now, we know at least, until at least the first year, there is not going to be football. Okay, so and I would suggest a very strong possibility there's not going to be football for this entire season. So as we're looking at this as a fluid document between the football expenditure that you have listed here, at basically 60,000, not counting coaches' salaries, looking down the road a piece, a place like this, maybe where we're talking utilizing that money for a potential after-school program, I mean, is that, how would we, how, a sample of how would we go about adjusting this?
Are you asking me, Mr. Abraze?
I'm asking anybody who can answer my question.
What I would say is if you, if it was the pleasure of the board to take the expenses away from football at almost 60,000, I could go through and figure out what the coaches are. Could be, based on the number of coaches, Mr. Abraze, and the salaries, could be another 35, $40,000. You're talking almost $100,000 right there. I don't know if you want to look at the other ones you mentioned, because as you know, hockey, the biggest expense is the ice.
Right. Right. Well, playing devil's advocate here, if we don't use the football stadium, do we have to pay for the football stadium?
That's an interesting question, Mr. Abraze, I don't know the answer to that one.
And that's another 51,000, right? Again, I'm, I'm just looking at it in terms of, this is the type of thing that as we go on, as Mr. Parker suggested, no more, no less than quarterly reviews of where we're at. If it were quarterly or monthly, this is the type of thing that we'd be able to work from and adjust, correct? Is that what we're talking about?
I would even suggest more than quarterly, I'd suggest monthly, monthly, to be honest with you.
Very good. Very good, okay. Any, anybody have any questions, thoughts? As we look at this? Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, I'm just looking, not that I want to eliminate any sports, but if we could work it out, that even if we could come up with between partial rental price of the stadium and then take away from the sports that we know are not going to be played at least for the next six months, even if we can come up with 100,000 to put in that line item, I, I would put that in the form of a motion.
Ms. Abraze, Ms. Murray has her hand up, I don't know if you can see her.
I know, I'm, I've only got a few pictures here, Ms. Murray, go ahead, sorry.
So, so I'm happy to second Millie's motion because I do think we should be thinking about moving money around that we know we're not going to spend where we've traditionally spent it. But my question more has to do with, I am all about having the budget being a living document and revisiting it on a monthly basis and moving money around. Legally, can we do that? Is that something we're allowed to do or are we locked into what we agree to now? So that if we say $200,000 is going to X, that's where it lives and that's what it gets spent on, or it doesn't get spent?
My understanding, and Mr. Parker can jump in, Eric Demus got disconnected, he's going to try to come back on and could be a question for Mr. Demus. My understanding is the school committee can move the line items around throughout the entire year any way they want, as long as the school committee approves and votes on it.
But you said the sped money couldn't be moved.
That's transportation, that's the only one, because there's several line, that's the only one I'm concerned about talking to Eric Demus. The other line items, you can, to the best of my knowledge, you can move them around throughout the year as you choose.
To the chair, if I may, this is Eric Demus, I get reconnected.
Go ahead, Mr. Demus, welcome back.
Oh, thank you, sir. Mr. Obramsky is correct. With the exception of the special education transportation, the budget that the school committee votes is a bottom-line budget. And as such, the school committee has the ability to move money around in between individual line items at any point during the year. The only thing that the school committee cannot do is increase the total bottom line.
Very good, thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Demus a question?
Ms. Murray, go ahead.
So we were discussing the line item around special ed transportation, Mr. Demus, and we're assuming that we're not going to need as much money as we have allocated there. If we happen to under-budget for that, can we move money into it later? Or are we stuck with what we agree to now?
You can move money into it later, at, at any point.
Okay, so we underfund it and then re, and then add money to it later, that's fine. But if we overfund it and we don't end up spending everything, do we lose that money or do we get it back?
It would not be subject to reappraisalation. You, you would lose those funds.
So it's better to underfund it and add money to it later than to think that we are over-budgeting for it now?
That certainly provides a school district with more flexibility. The only thing that I don't know, and this would be a question for Mr. Obramsky, is are there, is there a minimum amount that DESI is requiring you to budget in that line item?
That's an excellent question.
On special education transportation, just so we're talking about the same line item, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Demus, the reason we kept it at the same rate, even if you're looking at the budget book, even though we spent less money this year, is basically because of the fact, I'm, I'm not sure, and hopefully you're aware of this, but the contract was just recently renegotiated at a higher rate for some of the out-of-district students. So that's why we kept it at the same rate for next year. So I just want to make sure you're clear, Ms. Murray's question, if, if we cut that from 4.5 to 4.2, could we switch that other $300,000 to a line item within the general fund budget?
Well, we haven't voted on that budget yet, Mr. Obramsky.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm agreeing, I'm just asking his opinion, sorry if I always step my bounds, sorry, Ms. Murray. I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think to Ms. Murray's point is that the school committee hasn't actually taken a position yet as to the amount of either appropriation, the bottom line or the special education transportation line. So in, in my opinion, the school committee has flexibility right now and can decide to appropriate as they deem necessary. Again, I'm saying that with a caveat that I'm not certain if DESI is requiring you a minimum amount that you need to budget for that line item. I don't believe that there is, I just don't want to say with certainty tonight.
I don't believe there is, to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe there is.
Yeah, I, I've never seen that requirement, and actually the recommendation does make sense, given the fact that you know that you're not going to be transporting special education students, at least for the first two months.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demus.
That's what happens when you budget a household.
Any, any other questions on page two here? Do we want to make any cuts, any recommendations?
Okay, if I can, Mr. Chairman?
Parker.
Okay, so just some quick math, the football program totals with coaches approximately $132,000. Wrestling bubbles up to about 13.8. So right there, you've got $145,000 if, if you wanted to play with that as a body. You know, and then, you know, if we budget along on a monthly basis and determine what's what, if indeed football does come on board in February, we would have to come up with that, with that money as opposed to say the after-school spending that people sort of desire, so just throwing that out there.
Well, from the chair, from, to Ms. Murray's point, that Mr. Demus sort of acknowledged, if we change that line item to 4.2 million as opposed to 4.5 million and entered 300,000 for the after-school program, we could deal with these other issues as they come and especially in light of the fact that I'm pessimistic, but the MIAA is not in terms of football in the fall, and I mean, in the spring and things like that, so I personally feel if it's, if it's been presented to us that the one thing we know is for the first two months, there isn't going to be that transportation issue, we've sort of over-budgeted for it, why wouldn't we just do the rearrangement right from that, that was suggested going back when? I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but Ms. Cardello first.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that and with Ms. Murray, but the only, and I would amend my motion, but I would like to hear one more time from Mr. Obramsky if it's okay to explain if there is a reason why you think we should keep that additional funding in there, then we'll listen to that, and if, you know, you don't and you think it's okay and we can revisit that if it should come up that we need more money. And I mean, I have no problem with, with amending my motion, but I'd just like some clarification, Mr. Obramsky.
Based on Mr. Demus's conversation and the fact that we're going remote, it seems from talking to Mr. Donahue that at this point, the special education students are not coming, I don't see any problem with cutting that by the $300,000 that Ms. Murray's talking about. I, I didn't know if Mr. Demus would, if it was okay to do that, based on Mr. Demus's recommendation, we can do that.
Ms. Murray?
I, I just want to say that, again, we may end up needing the full amount of money that's been allotted there, absolutely, that is absolutely possible. But the problem is, if we do not spend it, the city is going to take it back. So to me, it seems like we're better off under-budgeting in that particular line because that's the only place, literally the only place that we can't reallocate that money if we end up under-spending. So to me, I would err on the side of being very conservative with that particular line item and adding to it later from wherever we need to as we go forward, rather than over-budgeting there because that's the one spot we cannot re, get our refund.
That's what I heard, I agree. Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, Mr. Obramsky, for the clarification. I will, I'll actually rescind my motion and make a new motion. The new motion is now to take the $200,000 from the bottom line, a line item for special education transportation, and move that to after-school program funding.
Ms. Cardello, just for clarification, did you say 200 or 300,000?
I'm sorry, oh, it was, oops, sorry. Am I, am I muted? Something just went crazy. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Actually, no, it was 300, I'm sorry, my apologies.
No, it's okay, just want to make sure what the motion was.
Yep, 300,000.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adjust the special, special education line item for transportation from 4.5 million to 4.2 million. And for that, $300,000 to be allocated into the after-school program.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Barrows, welcome.
Thank you, sorry, just want to be recognized, so I might be able to vote. I, I've been listening to, but if I can be recognized, just to be on record, would appreciate it.
Oh, well, so, I'm so happy to recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for making it, I know you're busy. Okay, so we got motion made and seconded, roll call vote, please, Addy.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Six, any affirmative, the motion passes. Next.
We all said on athletics section, Mr. Chairman?
I believe so, I believe, yeah, and we're looking at it as a fluid document that we will deal with as the time comes. I, I believe, I don't have any questions, anyone else?
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the meeting. Meeting's to page one. As you can see, the maintenance salaries is going down by about $65,000. The custodians are up by about $301,000. And the custodians being up by $301,000, that's mostly for adding all those junior custodians on that we did, I believe, in February. Summer help, we didn't have any summer help this year because we were way ahead on the cleaning. We still get that miscellaneous pay that we're going to work on for $3,000, level funded. The overtime at $140,000, level funded, and the 5% night differential at $25,000. We increased that by $10,000. House workers went down. We did end up cutting one house worker, so that's why that line item went down. And the maintenance went down because we did away with a position and that individual ended up going back to be a regular custodian with some bumping rights. I don't know if anyone has any questions on this page?
Questions, anyone? No? Let's move on.
Move to the next section. These are the general expenditures and maintenance. As you can see, the custodian supplies, because of what we spent last year, we increased that by $25,000. Custodians clothing, we increased that by $3,000. General work, we actually decreased it by $100,000 because of what we spent last year. Motor maintenance, level funded at the same, $15,000. Private protection, which is the security systems, we increased, decreased, I'm sorry, by $5,000. Sprinkler systems, we had a lot of problem with the sprinklers in the school systems. Hopefully, it doesn't happen again, but we increased the budget by $110,000 based on the amount of money we spent last year. Hopefully, it's all fixed now, but we did have a lot of problems. We cut the vandalism completely because we paid for it out of general work. Electrical contact, we decreased by $20,000 based on what we spent. Plumbing, we decreased by $15,000. The HVAC system, we did decrease by $100,000 because we did a lot of work that doesn't need to be done anymore in some of the systems. The elevator, we decreased by $20,000. The cleaning contract, we cut it out completely. We're going to have our custodians at this point clean the every high school at night. Snowplowing, we left it the same at $150,000. You never know where that's going to go. Could go up, could go down, depending on the year. Housing of the vehicles, we left the same at $60,000. It actually went down a little bit on the contract. We did spend $60,418, but on the new lease, it actually did get down a little bit. Not significant. We cut landscaping by, actually, we increased it by $52,000. The budgeted amount last year, we increased that by $52,000. Devon School Lease, we decreased it by $40,000 based on the taxes in the city of ever going down because most of these know we have a triple net lease. Upgrade on the security system, communication system, we level funded that, and we decided not to paint any of the sections of the high school. We were originally going to paint, keep saying this wrong, Building A this year, but we decided not to paint it because it's not in that bad a shape. So we decreased the whole line item by $425,000. We left electricity and gas the same. Anyone have any questions on this particular page?
Chairman?
Ms. Lambert, then, Mr. Barrows.
Thank you. So are we anticipating any changes with the HVAC system based on, you know, when we do get back into the buildings? Or is there anything grant-wise that we can do? Do we know if there's any changes essentially to do there for safety?
We had a conversation about this today with the superintendent, the mayor, and Demus, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Bond afterwards. Biggest thing with our HVAC system, especially with what's going on now, is to change the filters often, every couple of weeks. The more you change the filters, the better the airflow that will be. So Mr. Bond was going to call the vendor, E&amp;E, and speak to them about changing the filters more often. But I believe, other than what you already know about the situation that happened at the Lafayette School, which that AC will be repaired, shut, will be up and running, I believe, before the first day of school, which was scheduled for August 31st, our HVAC systems are in pretty good shape, Ms. Lambert. And that Lafayette was completed, I believe, before the first day of school.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Obremsky, a few meetings ago, you mentioned about, so on that same note as Mr. Lambert's question, you asked us, I think was, if I remember correctly, was to fix the, I think it was the Lafayette School?
HVAC system, that's the one where, and I may have the month wrong, but one condenser broke in February or March, and then the other condenser broke in June.
Right.
It is the Lafayette School, Mr. Barrows.
So on that note, have we looked at other schools or how are they, are they okay? We don't want to come back in the middle of the year and say, oh, my God, it broke in the parlor because we didn't know, it was so old, and do we need now $100,000 to fix it?
No, we had minor problems. I don't think they're major problems, and I'd have to get Mr. Bond more involved, but I believe at the Kavarian, because that's the next oldest school, and then English after that. But overall, they are all working right now, Mr. Barrows, but I could see in the next two, three, four years, the same thing happening at those schools.
But not this year, especially if it's a tight budget, right?
I hope not, but I will get you more information tomorrow because I know that me, Mr. Bond, and I think even the superintendent, we've had this conversation about those buildings multiple times.
I think it would be great. I mean, I'm not opposing to this budget now, but we should look at that because I remember that I was personally shocked by the price that I was going to be to fix the Lafayette one. That is a new school. So we should look at to see, no, of course, that if there is an emergency, we have to do it. But even before we move forward, then, not in the middle of the year, come back and like, oh, my God, now is the latest school. We didn't know. I'm like, well, what about six months ago when we approved the budget? We look at that, so.
I believe we're okay. I will check with Mr. Bond, and I will get back to you in the next couple of days, just so you are aware.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Obremsky.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Parker?
To you, Mr. Obremsky. So in the final analysis, what ended up happening at the Lafayette School? At one point, we're looking at, you know, $1.4 million. We're looking at bringing in a temporary air conditioning unit. What's the status of that particular problem, and where is that reflected from a financial standpoint in the budget? Or was that one of the items that we paid for last year?
I believe that, well, the original, let's start from the beginning, Mr. Parker. I don't think it was as high as $1.4 million. I don't have the price in front of me, Mr. Parker, but for some reason, around $350,000 rings a bell. I may be off a little bit, Mr. Parker. 100%.
It was well over a million dollars. Maybe it was 1.2.
No, it wasn't a million, but I'll get you an exact price tomorrow, Mr. Parker. But it was significant. I will agree with you. It was significant, maybe like $400,000, $500,000. It was significant, maybe even $500,000. So what happened was, the first condenser might have been about $325, Mr. Parker, and the other one might have been about $250,000, but I'll get you exact numbers tomorrow. So long story short, what happened was, we went in to repair it. Mr. Bond worked with Mr. Marashi to put a specification out through E&amp;E, which was part of their contract that we could do it that way, and we've done it that way on other schools in the past. When the price came in, like you said, way out of sight. So somehow, the city got involved. Mr. Lane, George Lane, who's the facilities maintenance director, and Lara Weeby, who's in personnel. Lara Weeby also is an attorney and also is the purchasing agent. We actually had a meeting down the school with the deputy superintendent, Steve Bond, myself, George Lane, Lara, Rob Marashi one day, and at one point, the project was on hold for two or three weeks, trying to determine whether we could do it at a less costly cost and whether somebody could get the equipment faster and whether we had done everything properly. Rob Marashi then contacted the Attorney General's Office in the last week or so. The Attorney General's Office ruled that everything was done proper. And E&amp;E had already previously, Rob had issued a purchase order, Rob Marashi, the procurement officer, had issued a purchase order, so the project is back on. From talking to Mr. Bond, it will be done before school starts. That HVAC will be up and running. And the biggest thing was for the rental at the time, Mr. Parker, E&amp;E originally didn't think they could get it in time, but I don't know how, why. I think when the city got involved, they might have found a different vendor, but I'm not 100% correct. They could get it quicker, but honestly, the project will be done on time, but it was a significant amount of money, and it is back on right now, Mr. Parker, but it was on hold for about two or three weeks. There was no work done at all.
Okay, so.
And it was paid out of last year's money, I believe, Mr. Parker. I believe it was all last year's money. But I know the initial purchase order was, I double-checked the second purchase order, but I believe it was all paid out of last year's money. But I can double-check that, Mr. Parker, for sure.
Okay, maybe maybe we can have Mr. Bond up before us at some point at a regular meeting to give us the final story on that whole deal.
Absolutely. Can even bring Mr. Marashi if you'd like.
No, I think Mr. Bond will suffice.
Okay, thank you.
That's why he makes the big bucks.
Thank you. Any other questions on this page? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Apparently, everyone understands the Devon's lease except for me, so as the newbie to this budget, would you mind explaining the Devon's lease to me?
Yes, so I believe, we started the lease in January. I don't remember the specific year. We're either on the seven and a half years or eight and a half years. I think we're on the seven and a half years right now, Ms. Murray, if I'm correct. It is a triple net lease, which means we are responsible for paying the lease on the building, which is approximately $470,000. I think we just got the new bill yesterday, $460,000, $470,000. It could be off by $10,000 or $20,000, plus the taxes on the building. That's why the budgeted amount there of $580,000. We did actually, we are working with the city. The city has been interested, and this was all pre-COVID-19, interesting in purchasing the building. So that conversation continues. I know they did have a couple of appraisers go to the building and appraise the building to see what the cost would be. I am not privy if they've actually had conversation with the owner. That would be Tony Souza, who's in community development, was handling that. I'm not sure.
Is it privately owned?
Privately owned by Cassano Development from Chelsea. So at at some point, the city needs to make a decision whether they're going to purchase that or not purchase that. And I think prior to the COVID-19, I'm not saying they definitely were. Now, with the situation that the city's in, I'm not sure what all the finances are like. I can't answer what the whole city finances are. That would be Mr. Demus. But I know they were looking at it, and I had multiple conversations with Mr. Souza and Mr. Demus. This is all in the last year, in the timeframe, Ms. Murray, in the last year.
So we've spent $3 million leasing the Devons over the last seven years, roughly?
Hold on. Let me do a little five times. Approximately, you are correct, Ms. Murray. Approximately.
Well, that doesn't seem like a great use of money. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
From the chair, from the chair, Mr. Obremsky?
Yes, Mr. Abraze.
What in the world do we get for $800,000 of an HVAC contract?
I believe the HVAC, oh, last year, we had some repairs that needed to be done. So we had some, when the contract went out to bid last year, Mr. Abraze, I believe, last year was the first year of the contract, called add alternates in the contract for various repairs that needed to be done on various systems across, in different schools. So over the three-year period of the contract, we could pick and choose whether we wanted to do some of these based on the age of the buildings. I, off the top of my head, I'm not sure which ones we picked without looking at the contract and talking to Mr. Bond, but we also, we have one full-time worker here every day, and then in the summer, they bring in what's called a journeyman. They didn't bring him in this year so we could save money, and they put that cost back onto us because the gentleman was so ahead in cleaning the filters and changing the filters and keeping up with the system. They control the, and then when things break, we pay for certain repairs, Mr. Abraze, but not all repairs. I'd have to honestly get Mr. Bond more involved for the specifics. I wish I had, I could give you more specifics, Mr. Abraze, but I don't want to tell you something that's not correct.
Well, I had it, I mean, what doesn't make sense, what doesn't make sense to me is, for the amount of money it seems like we pay out on this contract, you know, we could hire a full-time HVAC person at every building. And to top it all off, all of a sudden, when something goes wrong, like Mr. Parker was referring to, that we were looking at a bill of almost a half a million dollars between the new compressor and all the temporary AC units we were going to have to, and so, again, I'm just looking at it. It says 19 was $576,000, appropriated for $2,600,000, and now it says 2020's estimated total was $826,000. And, you know, now it says the request for 2021 is $500,000, a savings of $100,000, but and I just, there's something about this, I mean, is there someone, do we have an expert in this area, whether in the city or somewhere, that can look at this and see exactly if we're getting a real bang for our buck here? Because someone contacted me last year when we were talking about this and quite frankly said, we're just, bottom line, getting ripped off for what's going on here.
I can check with, the day that we met down in Lafayette, the city brought George Lane, the facilities maintenance director. I'm not aware of his, I know his background as a construction. I'm not sure of his background in HVAC. But we can look into bringing some type of consultant in that we can bring in that may have more expertise than myself or Mr. Bond to see exactly your question because that has been raised a number of times.
Well, hold it, hold it. Come back up for a second. Back up, please, for a second. Would you consider Mr. Bond an expert in HVAC?
No, Mr. Bond is an expert in cleaning.
And you're not an expert in HVAC, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so when, my question is, when we enter into this contract, is there anyone that has any expertise in HVAC that represents us when we're entering into this contract? The city. The city, right.
I would defer, right now, they, it would be Mr. George, it would be George Lane.
Okay.
But Mr. Marashi would.
I can't answer without speaking to Mr. Lane, his background in HVAC, to be honest with you. I can't answer that without speaking to him.
But this contract would go out on bid, which would be managed by the procurement officer?
That's correct. It would have been put out by Rob Marashi.
Okay. Good. All right, this is definitely something that has to be revisited because I'm just not comfortable with this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
So, to Mr. Obremsky, yeah, I would agree. I mean, we need to take a look at that number, especially when, you know, I mean, we need to take a look at that number, especially when, you know, you're paying, you know, 600, 800,000 dollars a year for one guy. And when something goes wrong, we've got to pay for it. Like, like, I understand paying for parts and materials. But, you know, paying over and above that just seems kind of odd with me. But then again, you know, I'm not a mechanical guy, so I'd like to see that explained. And if I could, Ms. Murray, on the Devon School, you're absolutely right. I mean, that seems like a lot of money to pay. And besides being the rent, the taxes, I also believe we pay the water bill too. So the savings at the Devon School is, from a financial standpoint, is in transportation costs. So Mr. Baldassari, a couple of years ago, estimated that to be about $2 million a year to provide transportation for a student outside a district. Round trip is 90 bucks a day. And round trip within district is like $27 a day. So that's what he said.
I am absolutely not questioning the value of the Devons educationally, financially, or in any other way. The only thing I'm questioning is the renting of a school building, which just seems like throwing good money away endlessly. We already know, we, we've been talking about the fact that we need one building. We don't own the Devons. We need two buildings, at least.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, it's kind of crazy to think that, you know, we're paying $40,000 in taxes, but we are. Or whatever the amount is.
Yeah, I mean, that's my only point. My point was never to question the Devons itself. I think the Devons is an amazing resource. And it's absolutely something that we need on multiple levels in Everett. And I consider us very fortunate to have. I just think we should own that building.
I agree. I've been telling that for years.
Anyone else, anything else on this?
Mr. Chairman, this superintendent has her hand up.
I'm sorry, I've only got so many boxes here on my right. Miss, Madam Superintendent, please.
Yes, just one quick thing, and it may have already been mentioned. But to your point on the HVAC contract, we completely agree with you. And I think that's why we had only extended this contract for three months, when we extended contracts at a couple, a couple of school committee meetings ago, because we don't have an intention of sticking with this. But I definitely agree with your point that we do need to make sure that when we are going out to bid, that we have, you know, the right people there to tell us exactly what we need. Because we, we do acknowledge that this is, that we're spending too much money here. And that we could be doing this more efficiently.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Anything else? Next, what are we looking at?
Any more questions on this page by anybody? Next, we'll go to maintenance, page three. Maintenance page three gives you the breakdown of the number of staff we have employed in the maintenance custodial house worker area. As you can see, we cut the maintenance by staff by one. So that is going down by 66,000, a little over $66,000. Senior custodians will remain the same. It's going up by about $38,000. That's because of the raise. The junior custodians, we have five of them, budgeted at 262,355. I don't know why that didn't come out as a change, but that's an increase of 262,000, obviously. And the total number of custodians is going from 32 to 37. That's the additional junior custodians. The overall budget on the custodian side is going up by 301,337. In the house workers, we actually cut one house worker for a savings of $13,794. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that section?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms., that's Ms. Murray. Go ahead.
Mr. Obremsky, this is, this is purely a question out of ignorance. But if we have 37 custodians and we have a $15,000 clothing allowance for, for maintenance workers, we're paying roughly $400 per custodian per year in clothing expenses?
Well, we leased the uniforms. We're still in negotiations right now. I don't believe it's settled on what type, if you, I don't know if you were involved in the contract negotiations.
No.
Type of uniform they are going to wear. So right now, we clean the uniforms also. So that is all being discussed right now on what type of uniform they're going to wear when school starts and who is going to clean them. So that would be approximate, yeah, it's about 15,000. It may come in a little less. Mr. Bond is working with a company, because I know I had a conversation. It may come in a little less than 15, but not too much less than 15,000.
Why are we washing their uniforms?
I believe, and there was multiple emails going back and forth. I believe it is part of the contract.
So, so I am right, though, that it's about $400 per custodian for uniforms?
I didn't break it down, Ms. Murray. If you give me a second, I could break it down for you. Hold on one second.
Does that seem high to anyone else?
Well, $405, but I honestly think it's going to come in a little less than 15,000, Ms. Murray. I think from talking to Mr. Bond, it might come in at 12 or 13,000. He's still working on, depends on the type of uniform. He's still working with the custodians on what they're going to wear. That was part of what we talked about in negotiations, what type of shirt they would wear. So he's still working with them and working with the company. But it is about $405 a person.
Which is about eight bucks a week.
For the year, for the year, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the year, that is not high.
Well, nobody pays my dry cleaning.
Yes, perhaps the Boston Public Schools doesn't pay dry cleaning for the teachers.
Are we paying teacher dry cleaning?
I believe not, but I believe it's fine to pay our custodians for their clothes for the year, in my opinion.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Cardella.
Thank you. That's one of the reasons we're looking to change the uniforms. A, for comfort, and B, because they wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to do it. We, we give them uniforms. And for a long time, the uniforms have been made of very, I'm almost going to say rough type of material, not the type that you would want somebody to wash in iron every week. And I think we give them like three short sleeves, three long sleeves, shorts, plus khaki pants. And the thing is that we want them to come to work looking professional. Don't want them to come to work with wrinkled clothes. So I wasn't here when that whole thing first started. But in looking at the price and looking at the way they actually do look professional on the job, I've never had a problem with it. But I do agree, I think they'd be happier to have more comfortable uniforms. And then that would alleviate the money for us to have to, you know, do the, do the dry. They're dry cleaned, actually.
Right.
They're dry cleaned every week, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this page? Next.
The rest of that section in maintenance is just a repeat of the previous pages and just a breakdown. I don't know, in Mr. Applez, position summary, salary summary, and salary schedule. Position summary is a repeat of previous pages. I don't know if it's necessary. We can stay and go through it if you'd like. Salary summary just has the names of the individuals, but it's already broken down. And salary schedule is just the raises that the various bargaining units got. But just for informational purposes, so everybody is aware, I did put after all these sections, the request that the principals had given us in, I'm going to say, early February to mid to late February, maybe early March. This is all before we had the COVID-19, with the additional staff and additional non-staff requests. I highlighted, if you noticed, some yellow highlights in your budget books. I did actually highlight what was already purchased. The staffing remains fluid. We didn't do a lot of increase in staffing just because the money wasn't there. Only a couple of CTE of vocational staff at the high school because of the expansion of the programs. And one or two other individuals because of increase in class size in schools. We still are working with the principals with that. And we will meet with them either Friday or Monday to go over that. But anything that's highlighted in the principal request has already been purchased, just so you know. And the other things, if the maintenance repairs, Mr. Bond will be working on them. If there's staffing issues, those are things that still need to be discussed. And it's all depending on how much money we have. But you got to remember, those requests were all pre-COVID-19 or pre-coronavirus virus. I don't know if anybody has any particular questions about any of the requests of the schools or want me to review any of them. I'd be happy to. Go after the board.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Anyone else have any thoughts? I'm, I'm fine. We don't have to look at individuals. Anything else?
I don't know if anybody else has any questions. I mean, the only thing I'd like to do, Mr. Applez, at this point, and I did speak to this before, and I won't be lengthy, is we have a lot of earmarked. We have two earmarked COVID-19 related grants for iPads and laptops and some, you know, air ventilation cleaning supplies, almost $3 million together. We did get a tech grant to purchase some more iPads and Chromebooks. And we're making significant inroads in that. So the students and the teachers will all have a working device at their house. Overall, I honestly believe we're in good shape in this budget right now. I know it's only up about 448,000 over last year. But I believe a lot of districts are in a lot of trouble overall. I think overall, we've done a good job managing the budget with the school committee and the new superintendents and deputy superintendents help. And hopefully, it'll be a great and successful school year. Nobody can predict what's going to happen with the COVID-19. But hopefully, we're all back in school shortly and everything's back to what it was before March last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Motions?
I have a question. The individual school budgets, how did, where did those fall in? In what we just reviewed?
When we put this together, the last 14, 15 years, this is the way the budget was put together. I was asked to put the budget together the same way. I do have it broken down by individual school, Ms. Murray, both salaries and staffing. I could email that to everybody in the morning, if you prefer to look at it that way. I can actually bring it up on the screen now if you'd like. But it is available for you to look at. It's a Monday's meeting, if you'd like. I can do it now, email it to everybody.
I'm more asking about the budget requests that were included for each building.
Okay, they're in the back of the book. So can you read the question then? I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood.
How are these rolled into what we've already discussed?
They're rolled into what we already discussed. And like I said, most of this stuff was already purchased. It's the furniture was already purchased under, that was already purchased. I got to look at some individual schools. I know some people ask for furniture, like the computers, the math department asked for a computer lab and some tables for the lab. That was already rolled into the expenses. I'm sorry, Ms., I misunderstood the question. I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert.
Okay, no, I just, the way it's worded as a budget request, I just wanted to make sure that it was accounted for already, or is this?
Some of it we thought we needed to get before school. We were expecting to, obviously, that's not going to be the case. Some of these repeat requests, like the high school, Princeton Review, College Board, some of them are repeat requests.
Sure. Okay, I just.
Budgeted for.
And so like, the teacher requests, we don't have to go through and approve them? You have them rolled up into the teachers in the?
Except for the staffing.
All right, thank you. That answers my question.
What's fluid?
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Ms. Cardella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Obremsky and the whole team for putting this together nicely done. And actually, while, while the years I've been reading different budgets at different levels within the city, I was, maybe it's just me, maybe I've actually learned how to read a budget book. But this one is very clear to me. The other thing I do want to do is I want to make a motion on something that we spoke of earlier. And that is to get a budget update on a monthly basis here on out, at least till the end of the term of this budget.
I, from the chair, my understanding was we were going to meet to discuss the budget on at least, it was recommended quarterly and then monthly. That was my, that's what I thought.
Well, we'll do it as a meeting then, as a meeting, instead of just a monthly update. But do a monthly meeting specifically for updates on the budget.
So like a budget of the whole meeting on a monthly basis?
Yes.
Right. Give a second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We will have a monthly meeting of the whole on the, on the budget specifically to get, basically get updates from the administration as to where we're at budget-wise.
Can we add in something about having the ability to reallocate money as necessary?
That is already possible.
That's inherent in our rules and national law.
Correct.
Marconi, what did you say? I'm sorry.
No, I, exactly what Mr. Parker said. That is part of our authority already.
Okay.
Okay, motion on table, been seconded. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes, please.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Applez?
Yes. Six in the affirmative. Motion passed.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Parker?
I've got one last question, Mr. Obremsky. So probably for well over, going back to the superintendent search, there was a lot of conversation about providing each school with its own individual budget, right? That the building leader would, had input in and would manage and know where it stands. I see the request, but I don't see anything as granular as what was just described. Is that something that was discussed? Is that something that's forthcoming? Can we just? Understand where that, where that is?
Yeah, Mr. Parker, to answer your question. If you know, and I believe it was in June, it might have been in May, I forget the exact meeting, when we, the school committee authorized the superintendent to enter into a contract with Open Architects?
Yes.
That's something we've been working on with Open Architects.
Okay.
Doing that. So, and as of Monday, there also is another individual working in the finance department here. It started on Monday. So I, I didn't spend a lot of time with her this week because of the budget. I will spend a lot of time with her, and that's something that will be done and will be available for the principals, so they know exactly how it's broken down, what expenses they have. And even, Mr. Parker, I'll use an example. You can pick any department here, but says, like, Ms. Turner, I, I'm not picking on Ms. Turner. I'm just using athletics as an example.
Fair enough.
Be tracking individually all the expenses. Like, if somebody wants to purchase something that's out of the ordinary, that's not already budgeted, she needs to make sure she has the money in that budget before it comes down yet. I'm not picking on her, I just use her as an example.
Okay, so then therefore.
You know, working in that direction right now.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, we still have one motion, um, in front of us, Mr. Chairman.
What's that motion?
Uh, Ms. Cardella's, we got in the 300,000 dollars. I like, I don't think, do we vote on that?
Yeah. Yeah, right, yeah, I believe, I believe so, unless in my old age, I imagined it, but, uh, I thought we voted on that.
It was voted on.
Barrows, Mr. Barrows arrived just in time to vote on that.
Wow. Okay, three and a half hours, I'm, I'm spent.
You, you. The, uh, vote, uh, anything else? I take it I will entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Oh, uh.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Abraze, and Mr. Parker? I think we have to make a recommendation to move this to the full board for Monday night, correct, Mr. Parker?
Yeah, uh, but, uh, with that.
Mended.
Uh, but with that, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we cancel the budget, uh, the whole committee meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow night.
Okay, so, that's gonna be in the form of one whole motion?
No, I'm gonna make it two. So, the first motion is that we cancel tomorrow night's meeting, uh, we completed the task tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to cancel, uh, the proposed meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow night on the budget. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Cardella? Cardella?
You're on mute.
Yes, I'm, yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, motion passes, Mr. Parker?
Okay, and I make a motion to refer the matter of the fiscal year, um, 2021 budget, um, to the full board, um, to be voted on, on, at our next regular meeting, which is August, Monday, August 24th.
I second.
Motion's made and seconded to, uh, refer the, uh, proposed budget, uh, to the, uh, school committee at the regularly, next regularly scheduled meeting for approval on August 24th. Roll call, vote please.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, motion passes. Now, I'll run the fair motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, uh, roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Ms. Lambert's on mute.
Yes.
All right, six in affirmative, uh, everybody have a great rest of week, weekend. See you all Monday night, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone, thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night now.